Okay, Madam Chair, we are now live. We are streaming. Ms. Mathias, you may proceed with the executive review session.
Okay, mic's on. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for May 21st, 2024. Please be reminded, there is no public testimony during the review session, so please do not raise your hands. You will be of it. Your opportunity to speak will be at the public hearing. First item is zoning calendars, continued hearings, item number 21, 2022 78 BZ, 1512 Union Street, Brooklyn.
We received a community board recommendations to approve this application, and based on the prior board hearing that was held on March 26th, the applicant has revised the plans. And this is especially with regards to the Sukka space, and notes as directed by the boards, as directed by the board has been added to the plan. Did everybody, okay. So I have to say, I'm satisfied with the submission, and I do want to thank the applicant and their team to, for responding to the concerns that were raised throughout the hearing. Vice Chair, Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair. I'm also satisfied with this application, and I think the last submission was quite responsive and very helpful.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
I'm satisfied and have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Macheta?
I'm satisfied with the application. The only thing is, I wanna like just make a hint on it, is the vault, the DOT approval for the vault, I haven't seen that, and my understanding is that they added a note to the plans indicating that the vault construction will be subject to DOT and DOB approval. With that, I'm satisfied with the application. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Yeah, thank you. That was the only comment I had, which is, if we were still waiting for DOT, or if we were okay with the note, I'm satisfied with the application.
Typically, I believe this process will start, the approval from DOT generally comes after, that's my understanding, but sometimes we have seen them, I don't think we have seen any approval from DOT for vault construction prior. So I can, I think the note on the plan gives us enough of a support.
Can I, can I make a suggestion on that note? That note, I did read this note, and it didn't change from the last submission. If they can just make it like larger font, like make the font twice as whatever is on the plans, and just put it in a box, box it, that would be helpful to the DOB Plan Examiner to-
To flag.
Yes, to flag it, and sometimes when the note is like fine print, it just slips through. So, just to make sure that they see it.
Okay. Okay. Tracy has a comment? Yes, Ms. Benke?
Just wanted to note that we, if the board's satisfied with the plan, minus those edits, we will still need the revised EAS to update the information regarding the stories, and we will have a hazmat note for the plans as well, the final plans.
Okay. So, was a hazmat analysis done?
It was. There's a DAP approved rap, yes, so we have several notes.
Okay, so those notes need to be added, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to the next case.
Item number 22, 2023 53 BZ, 92 King Street, Brooklyn.
So at the initial hearing, board had raised several comments, and has expressed concerns about the findings. The applicant has made its submission in response to the comments that were raised. Applicant's plan has been revised to comply with the flood regulations. The revised plan will provide a 10-foot-deep front yard versus an 18-foot, and a deeper rear yard of 25-foot instead of a 15-foot. Other than that, no other changes has, has been made to the side yard width, and the FAR still remains at 1.65 FAR, which the applicant says is permitted if the site meets the predominantly built-up requirement. So I just want to first start off with that, is, the applicant is relying on an optional regulations of predominantly built-up area. It's not a requirement, it's not a default, it's an option that one exercises. And we have seen oftentimes developers saying, no, we, we are not proposing a predominantly built-up. So in this case, the applicant is choosing to, to, to apply the optional predominantly built-up area requirement, which allows a higher FAR of 1.65. But because the applicant is relying on this optional predominantly built-up floor area, it therefore is also requiring an 18-foot-deep front yard. And by, since the board is, has asked the applicant to reduce the front yard depth to 10 feet, because that's the most typical built form in that area, the applicant is saying that by reducing the front yard depth to 10, that's, that waiver is still on the table, that will still be required. And I would say that this is a choice the applicant is making. Just because you want to achieve a 1.65 FAR, you are then therefore needing this waiver. You don't need a 1.65 FAR, you could do with less. And that goes to a lot of the questions we had asked during the review session at the last hearing of, what is the built FAR? What is the typical floor to, what is the floor width of detached homes and other, you know, single-family homes and other homes? So those informations are also very critical in our ability to determine whether this 1.65 FAR is needed, and therefore, do you need a front yard waiver? Because a 10-foot yard would be sufficient. So I am just kind of setting the stage right now, because I think, to me, that's quite a big question I have there, and I, it has not been answered. So do not assume just because that option is there, you can exercise it, and therefore we have to, you know, go with that, because that is triggering some of the other waivers. And that goes to finding E. So going to finding A, uniqueness, board had asked for a revised uniqueness study. Applicant does not believe that a revised uniqueness study is needed, and prior study stands. Specifically, the board had asked for the uniqueness of the shallow depth study and combined hardship of shallow depths and narrow widths affecting the site in the study area. Stating that majority of the sites are 100-foot deep and do not have side yard is insufficient. Need to back it up with data, and it also indicates that there are other sites with shallow depth. The analysis needs to show if these shallow and narrow lots are also vacant, and, and those are all needed to establish uniqueness, so just a statement alone is not sufficient. And the applicant knows that. We look for backup evidence, data, to support the narrative. With regards to finding C, neighborhood character, so the applicant needs to demonstrate the built FAR, front yard depth, rear yard depth, side yard width, on the built, of the built context, and those of the narrow and the shallow lots. Again, that analysis has to be provided, and that also speaks to the need for the E finding. Common ownership, I have to say, this is a little bit troubling, that there was a common ownership with lot 41 and 40, and that was up, very up till 1991, and then also briefly in 2005. And the applicant states that the subject lot subsequently went into tax lien, and the city sold the subject lot to current owner in 2019. And therefore, because of that break in the chain of common ownership of, due to the government intervention, this should not be considered a common ownership. And I have to say, board in the past, while has accepted the reason, it needs to be backed up with evidence, and I didn't see that. And from the acres, when I looked at it, it doesn't seem that city sold the property. So I am absolutely kind of confused with the statement that has been stated, and, and so that, that's a big question that needs to be responded to. Now, the applicant, in response to the common ownership, did provide an as-of-right development on the combined lot, and it shows that it would allow for a 2009 97 square foot, three-story building, one-family home with a floor plate of 37 by 27. In this instance, when not exercising predominantly built-up area FAR, the front yard depth can be reduced to 10, and this would allow for the FAR of over 1 easily. So again, I think the document, again, you're exercising an option of 1.65. And if you, based on what the predominant FAR and other things, you have to back into that, and, and therefore can have to exercise that into your analysis. So I think there is a big question mark I have on the common ownership right now. And as I conclude with E, it is not there. And as I said, the applicant is exercising a 1.65 FAR, which is an option. If you want to do an as-of-right, a lower FAR, you could still do that, and, and those need to be established, why it cannot be if the existing built FAR is much higher than 1.65, maybe you have a justification for 1 by 65, but so far, I do not believe the neighborhood is built way over 1.65 FAR, or even close to it. So I think those are the things we are looking for. And again, regarding the submission, it was not very well put-together submission. I'm not sure the intent of the table one, that was included in the cover sheet, apart from showing that the recent homes that were built in the area on narrow 25-foot lot. Now, absence of any available data from the applicant, if I were to review this table, the built FAR of these sites, especially for the one-family home, are much less than 1.65 FAR, except for one site that is overwilt, which would, overbuilt, and which would be problematic. So why they're overwilt, I do not want to explore that, that's not before us. But the bottom line is, all the as-of-right one-family homes are less than 1.65 FAR, so it's not helping your argument. Remaining lots that are two-family and three-family homes, and except for one, all are less than 1.65 FAR. Again, not helping your argument for, for pushing the 1.65 FAR. Since the FAR is requiring the waiver of the front yard, board needs to be convinced that 1.6 FAR is the typical built FAR, and hence need, you need to provide an FAR study, and a reduced FAR would be able, because I firmly believe the reduced FAR would be, would allow you to build a 10-foot-deep front yard, and you would not need a front yard waiver, and furthermore, may allow you for a reduced side yard waiver also. So at this point, all those four findings have not been met. Vice Chair, Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanna add that there was three new objections, oh, two new objections.
Oh, thank you.
I agree with you, Chair, that the uniqueness study is lacking any data to support it. I also agree that while we have, in the past, board has accepted, a common ownership can be broken by city owning, or by city taking possession of property, and thereby selling it, I too have not found any evidence to support that fact is actually what happened in this case. And finally, I also agree that the election predominantly built doesn't, is pushing some of the waivers, so that's, that's all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
So I have a serious issue with the D finding, and I believe that also impacts the A finding, and as a result of that, I, I think that they need to address the issues with the D finding, because I feel in this case, it is a threshold issue. So the common ownership from 1961 to 1990, and then again, from 2005 to 2006 with the neighboring lot, is really crucial here, especially since it was never foreclosed by the city. There was a tax lien sale, the lien was sold, but not the property. So that means that the unpaid taxes were sold to a third party, which acted as like a collection agency. If they didn't pay that back taxes along with penalties and surcharges to that third party, then the third party retained the right to foreclose, but that was not a government entity foreclosure. This was the bank of, I think Bank Mellon, New York-
I think, yeah.
-that actually executed the foreclosure, and then appointed a referee for, for the sale. And so I don't know if we can consider that government intervention, because at any time, the property owner was aware of the fact that they could pay off the unpaid taxes and retain ownership of the property, not regain, but retain it. So that ownership was never taken away from them by the government. So that leads me to say, we need to go to the second part of the issue of self-created. If it was owned in conjunction with the neighboring lot, then the uniqueness finding and the whole case has to be reanalyzed as if it were a lot that was co-owned with its partner. And if you go back to the original uniqueness study, when they talk about properties, narrow properties-
In common.
-and shallow properties, there are just too many properties that are 25 feet wide that are co-owned with its adjacent. There are, out of 42 lots that are 25 foot wide or less and undeveloped, 25 of them are owned in common with the adjacent lot. That's what they're telling us. So how would this be unique if we insist that they analyze their lot as if it was owned in conjunction with the adjacent? And so at this point, I can't get past that, to think that this is a case warranting a variance. And also, I don't find that their brief analysis of, of development in co-ownership resulting in a 3,000 square foot, single-family home, which is not considered viable, I don't find that convincing at all, because that's a very large home, and certainly a very large home in this neighborhood. And so it would definitely be marketable. And I won't say viable, because it's not considered an investment property. If it was, we would be considering financials. So I would say, not viable, but marketable. Everybody would want it. And so I don't see that this site really suffers from a hardship that isn't self-created at this point in time.
Thank you. That's, you're right, I mean, the uniqueness did talk about common ownership, and that changes the entire common, the uniqueness study. So the applicant needs to go back to the drawing board, or figure out an as-of-right solution. Thank you. Commissioner Macheta?
Thank you, Chair. I, I don't wanna be repetitive, I agree with what's being said. The only thing I would add, I got the feeling that they were like skeptical about the city transaction, that meaning that the city has ownership of that property at some time, some point in time. And, and maybe that's why they submitted a plot, plan, and some analysis, talking about the development of a combined lot, and they concluded that they believe that it's not a viable development. I, I do believe that 37 by 27, built-over area out of the lot, is, this is a generous size house, and, and it could be not even marketable, it could be very marketable, actually. So I, if, if they fail the test of proving that city owned this, this property, I believe this case should move quickly to the finish line.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I, I did appreciate that they responded to some of the architectural moves that we had suggested, but I, I agree that we still have some work to get to. You know, I agree with Commissioner Hartley-Brown, with everything that's been stated, but in my notes, I was still concerned with whether we had hit the E finding. So I think, it sounds like we have many findings that we're not convinced of yet. I have nothing further to add.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry, I forgot something. And, and this is, this is not a comment, but this is, the first submission of this application, like forgot about the flood resistant design compliance. The second submission, they said they accounted for that. When you look at the house, or the, the plan of the lowest floor, you're gonna see that it has openings from the front and the back, but I can't see openings from the side.
From the side.
When, when you design for flood, you gotta make sure that you have openings on all sides, so you avoid, or you minimize the drag forces that's impacting the house, or actually, you can eliminate all at all. It's, it's up to the designer, but what I wanted to say in, in short, and this is a suggestion to them, I don't think that the current design before us, and this is for engineers like architect, is not perfectly flood compliant.
Well, a note, should this project go forward, there should be a note on this-
Yes.
-plan, that BSA is not waiving any of the underlying flood regulations or appendix G requirements.
Yes.
Do, BS, DOB shall confirm complacency.
We do have a standard language for that.
So that language would be added. Should we go for, right now, the biggest hurdle the applicant has to face is meeting D, A, C, D. Did I leave out any?
E.
An E.
E. A B is not required, right? So it's A, C, D, E. Okay.
Move on?
Yes.
Item number 23, 2023 68 BZ, 8-10 Grand Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, I think, hold on, just give me a second. I'm sorry. I, okay. So the initial hearing on this application was held on March 26th. Overall, board found that the applicant met the findings of A, C, and D. Board had asked for some clarifications for findings related to B and E, and also making some edits to the statement and the plans. So the applicant has provided a revised plan, and notes that regarding the stair A per fire department direction has been added, though it needs to clearly state that both the doors and the windows need to be sealed. And the doors need to be sealed with a heavy door. I think the plan right now just says windows, but it needs to include doors also. The revised statement of facts, the narrative regarding finding E, response to the comments that were raised by me as to why the as-of-right use can't be retained on the ground floor, and the response that's been provided addresses the minimal hardships. So I, I was satisfied with that information. With regards to the revised financing, I know most of these questions came from Commissioner Hartley-Brown, so I will look for her statement. But overall, thus far, my questions had been responded to, and I think the applicant, application should be in a good position. But I want to hear from the other commissioners. Vice Chair, Shabeta?
Thank you, Chair. Are we still waiting for a letter of no objection from FDNY?
I, um-
I think we also have open hazmat still.
Yeah.
Chair?
I think Ms. Benke, or Ms. Pranga?
Can you hear the question?
Is there a microphone on?
Is there a microphone on? Can you?
I was wondering if we still have open noise and hazmat.
Yes, we do. We, we are waiting, well, we haven't received any new submissions on hazmat. And WRP, and I think that we still have open air quality and noise.
I have nothing further, then.
Thank you, Ms. Benke. And also WRP?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think we just received a sign-off for it.
Okay, great. So one down.
Fire Department, Fire Department, Jella?
I had noted that we should probably get a sign-off from FDNY. I'm looking into it right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
So I had asked them to address the D finding, as one of my questions, in terms of the co-ownership from the period of 1974 to 1990 with, between subject lots 27 and tax lots 1 and 23. And they spoke of the history of all three lots, and the fact that they were never joined as zoning lots, and that two of them were actually operated by Department of Social Services-
Right.
-which is a city department, and that once the lots actually went separately, and 27 was owned only by itself, the uniqueness that arose was not created by the owner, but was tenant-driven with the lot floor conversion. And so I felt that they satisfactorily addressed the D finding in this case. And then I had financial questions that largely centered around the construction costs for each of the scenarios, and I asked them to differentiate between the work that was done for each of the scenarios, the existing, the as-of-right, and the proposed. And I found them to be very responsive to my questions. They gave me a narrative talking about what was needed just to create the existing future use of this property, if it didn't have an as-of-right development or proposed. And then they talked about what was needed for the as-of-right development, and what was needed for the proposed. And I found them to be very detailed explanations. And on top of that, what I thought was extremely helpful, was the side-by-side charting of all three options, that basically showed what different costs were triggered in each iteration, and the cost of each iteration, broken down by each facet of the construction cost. I found that very helpful as well. And so as far as I'm concerned, they have satisfied my questions regarding the financials, and I have no other questions.
Thank you. Would you suggest this as a good sample?
Um, yes, definitely, in terms of commercial costs and breaking down what's needed for each-
Can I hear you?
Oh.
We lost the sound.
Just, just lost it, or just lost?
Did you hear the other part of what I said, or did you just not hear the last sentence?
No, no, we just- You cut out, yeah, you cut out.
Oh.
You may, just to be on the safe side, start all over again. Did you, did you hear her discussion about finding D?
Yes.
Okay, so-
But she just started saying something else, and cut out.
Oh, in answer to the chair's question? That part?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Good, that's easy. I said, yes, I found this could be a very good example of a financial analysis where construction costs are the question, because it very clearly laid out each scenario side by side, so you could see what different costs were triggered in each scenario. So I found that very helpful.
Screen behind went off. Where's Carlo? Carlo?
I tried.
Oh, okay.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, I heard that.
Yes, we heard it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your clarification. There is construction going on in the building somewhere, so if you're hearing some drilling noise, it's from that. We apologize, we have no control on that. Okay. Okay. Commissioner Sheta. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't really have, like, any comment in the application. It was just a...
Can you just, can you?
Wait, yeah.
Did everybody hear Commissioner Sheta while the drilling was going on? Go ahead.
I could hear him, but you could hear the construction, I could hear her as well.
All right, go ahead. Please start.
Thank you. So the only comment I have is, I had was like regarding an item in the construction cost that's called secur repairs to cast in place concrete stairs, appear report, and my question was, are these structural in nature? Just in case if they are structural, I just wanted to put a disclaimer that we didn't look at any structural drawings or like calculations submitted for the building, and I want to keep that disclaimer in place. And they haven't responded to that. They didn't have, actually, to respond to it. So I just want to make it clear that if there are any structural repairs, any structural deficiency, it need to be checked, taken care of, any deficiency need to be eliminated before, like, moving forward with that, with that opening, the proposed development. Just that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you, I had no questions.
Okay. You were satisfied with the application there?
I was, yeah.
Thank you.
New cases, item number twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, oh-two-BZ, fifty-six Brighton Street, Brighton Eleventh Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. We received proof of service of initial filing and hearing notices. Community Board has voted, has tabled the vote for this application as, since the application did not reflect the current traffic condition and the phase to investigation. You know, I just want to state that it is the community board's prerogative to table the hearing. I just want to make it very clear that as per the New York City Charter, the initial application was submitted to the community board within the specified date of filing an application to the board, and the community has since then sixty days to hold a hearing and submit its recommendation to the board. Information the board is asking for would be an outcome of reviews throughout the hearing process and, and the information would be, and any information that would be required by any other agencies that are reviewing this application. So at no point would a community board have a complete set of information to conduct the hearing. So I just kind of want to make it very clear. We are all working on documents that we received initially, and as throughout the hearing process more information comes in, we get, we review them. So community board, please keep that in mind as you table hearings and wait for all the documents for you to consider. So this is an application for a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-three dash nineteen to allow a use group three daycare facility to occupy the cellar and use of roof of an existing four-story building that is located at the subject site. The, I'm sorry, the site is zoned in a C eight-one zoning district. It is also in a AE flood zone. This is an existing building and has four floors with, with community facility and office uses located on the upper floor and the floor at the ground level, which is, because of the flood regulation, is a cellar, the applicant is proposing a daycare facility at this level, which is at grade. There are, the site also abuts a railroad track at the rear lot line. So just a couple of house cleaning to start off with. The zoning chart needs to be revised to include the lottery and lot width. I need an affidavit from the contract vendor, Kinder Villa, stating that how they would be involved in ensuring that they would be meeting the flood regulation. I did see in the letter, in the document, that there is a regular drill that is conducted by the building owner when it comes to flood regulation, but we also need to make sure that the Kinder Villa is aware of it and knows how to conduct the drills and be prepared for it. Regarding the narrative of the statement of facts, since this is an existing building, recently built new construction, please change the language to reflect that unless the property owner is considering to rebuild this building, because it's always, it's, the language talks about, in future tense. So as I said, this is a daycare facility that would occupy the cellar, which is at grade, and the roof of the building. The building would have a separate entrance, and the projected enrollment by twenty-twenty-six or twenty-twenty-seven would be about, twenty-twenty-six would be about seventy-seven students with twenty-eight full-time staff. And so the rooftop will be used for outdoor play area, and given the site's proximity to the railroad track, may require sound attenuation of the play area. Now, access to the roof will be via stairwell located inside the daycare. I'm assuming, it wasn't quite clear from the plan which staircase will be used, but I'm assuming it would be stairwell B, and I want the applicant to indicate that on the plan. And both stairwells A and B are fire exits for the entire building and are accessible to occupants of floors one through three. So I want the applicant to confirm the measures they would be taking to keep the children isolated from other occupants of the building. And also, if there is a need to use the elevator to access the roof, I want the applicant to clarify how would that be controlled? And kids would be separated from, children would be separated from the other tenants. So going to the findings of zoning resolution section seventy-three nineteen, the basic threshold comment, this is, this special permit is for schools, and school is a defined term per zoning resolution twelve-ten. And this is the operator's first daycare facility. Board in the past has reviewed prior daycare facilities under similar circumstances, where Board has determined that those daycares qualify, qualified as they would operate under a permit issued pursuant to New York City Health Code, section forty-seven dash oh-three, and would comply with all of the necessary Department of Health and Mental Hygiene requirements for the operation of a group childcare service for children within New York City, including providing constant competent supervision, maintaining minimum staff-child ratios, and adhering to the minimum group sizes, implementing all the required fire safety measures, implementing a written safety plan, and hiring qualified staff. So these are the things we look for, and the applicant in his statement has stated. So the applicant states that it will be applying for the required forty-seven, Article forty-seven permit from DOH once BSA approved, approves it. The applicant needs to clarify in its statement regarding complying with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene requirements stated. That I did not see. So the applicant needs a clarification, I need a clarification, would the operator need the Department of Health permit prior to obtaining the certificate of occupancy, or would Department of Health require a certificate of occupancy to grant the license? I'm assuming it is the latter. So the applicant can clarify that. So with regards to finding A of the section of the special permit, the site selection criteria was newly renovated, large floor plate for classrooms, dedicated outdoor play area that is located within Community District twelve and fifteen, and serves the Brighton Beach, she said, Bay Area, and it shall be less than one mile from previous school the operator manages, which is located at eighteen-ten Vouris Avenue, and budget, of course, and the site needed to be available for twenty-twenty-four. So I have one question. Why is one of the such search criteria that it needs to be close to, in close proximity to eighteen-ten Vouris, since it is not going to be run by the same school operator? In its submission, the applicant talks about five as of right sites that were considered. All I would say, Hundred Neptune is, is not an as of right site, it's in an M district, or a C eight district, it's across, it's on the other side of the train track. So it's in a C eight district. So except for that, all the remaining four sites are as of right, so applicant needs to revise the search letter, and also needs to include the existing floor area of these five, of these four sites. I, again, also was not sure what the intent of the catchment report was, because it doesn't respond to the finding A, and it was difficult to follow what it was representing. With regards to finding B, it meets it. The site is very much located within four hundred foot of our six zoning district. With regards to site, finding C, noise analysis was conducted for the classroom and the interior level. This, the applicant states, according to the applicant's statement, noise analysis was conducted for the classroom, and the interior noise level slightly exceeds the forty-five DBA. And the applicant states that the existing building was not fully fitted out for classroom at the time of monitoring, and that prior to obtaining a TCO, a noise monitoring will be, will be conducted to confirm the noise level meeting forty-five DBA. If not met, then mitigation measures will be implemented. Well, applicant has to provide an alternate means of ventilation and a composite window wall attenuation in, and especially for the rear classrooms, because that's facing the railroad. And that needs to be provided. I do not think this should be done as a post-TCO, if during TCO, if something happens, because the window wall attenuation is a composite, and those should be addressed before the TCO is issued. So the applicant must provide an alternate means of ventilation and a composite window wall attenuation of forty-five DBA, to meet the forty-five DB interior noise level. Applicant has conducted an air quality analysis and states that it screens out. I want to, I want our team to look at it before I can comment on it. The applicant is proposing to change the no parking signs to no standing school days and in front of its site. There will be no parking, currently, there's a no parking anytime in front of the site. And there is an ambulate from six AM to seven PM, Monday to Saturday, in front of the forty-four Brighton Eleven Street building. So I just want to make sure if this would anyway affect the drop-off and the pickup. I don't know if the change would be from no parking to a parking for school timing, that to me was not clear. If it is, then that would help. The applicant has provided the modal split. I would like to know how the modal split was arrived at. Most of the uses along the block front is residential and community facility use, so the potential for conflict with industrial use at this site is unlikely, so I'm not that concerned about that, but I just wanted to know how the modal split was arrived at. We did receive a W R P sign off. Is there any other update, Ms. Benke, on this?
No other updates at this time.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I don't think, I also don't think we have a DOT air quality, noise, hazmat, or school safety, but I'm not sure school safety would do with this.
It's below the threshold.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I do believe that they would, they will meet the A finding. I do think I need to clarify in the catchment area. They certainly do meet the B finding, and with the C and D, I certainly want to wait for sister agencies' informed responses to the questions that you asked. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
So I'm actually fine with this application. I only had one question, which you, Chair, had mentioned as well, which is that the, it's hard to believe that the rooftop play area is only going to be accessed by stairs, given the population of the students, which are all preschoolers, basically. So I think they should reanalyze their operations, and if it is needed that they use that elevator, then they should talk about how they're going to be using the elevator and will be blocking out other res, users of the site from that elevator usage during the times that they're using it. Other than that, I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm fine with the application as a special permit, but I really do have a concern regarding the flood compliance, and this is apart from the findings of the special permit. Number one, I don't like the fact that we're gonna put kids in a floor that's gonna be subject to flood.
I'm going to stop you right there.
Let me, let me finish. I'm not gonna step, like, in outside our limits. But if, even if we okay with that, we gotta make sure that this side, somebody within the system need to make sure that this side is really complying with the, with the flood resistant design requirements. I have a real, like, suggestion to them, and take this seriously, because I, I was looking for the foundation plan for this side during the past week, just to make sure that, that seems, thing seems to be okay, but I just got it like fifteen minutes ago. Number one, the statement of facts include a section about the flood compliance. I would suggest to the board that this shouldn't be in the statement of facts. Our disclaimer, our note, should be on the drawings. If you wanna put it in the, in the statement, that's fine, but we're not, like, concerned with reviewing compliance with flood regulations. My advice to them is the following. I understand that the building is founded on helical piles. I did look at the section that they submitted as part of our drawings. The helical piles are only located underneath the walls slash pile caps, I'll put that on the screen in a second, just to help them understand what I, I'm getting at.
What are you getting at? I'm trying to understand, because, so I want to make it very clear, this plan, this building has been built, and it has been built based on approved plans from D O B, and D O B has ensured that this building is dry-proofed and meets all the flood regulations.
It is dry-proofed, and it has flood locks, yes. It is protected with that. What I'm, what I'm getting at is something like totally different from that. If you let me finish, they might benefit from what I'm saying, if you don't want me put it in record.
I will be careful about it, because this has already gotten approval from D O B, and it's D O B's responsibility to ensure that the building is meeting all the structural requirements, and it's meeting all the underlying zoning and all other code requirements.
How about, you know?
I'm not talking about zoning, I'm talking about the, I...
I said all the code requirements, and if that means any structural and any...
Commissioner Sheta, one second. Commissioner Sheta's frozen on the screen. Oy. Carlo?
I think you just gotta turn the camera on and off again.
Yeah, put your camera on and off.
It's not happening with any of us. It happened with me earlier.
Put it back on now.
I just had to toggle it on and off, and it worked.
Yeah, put the camera back on. I'm sorry to interrupt you guys. Thank you, Sheta. There we go.
I think that this might be best served in online, an offline conversation with council, and then if need be, we can provide, you can provide a note to the record.
Okay. I'm not responsible for compliance with flood, nor the structural drawings for the buildings.
That's fine.
And advice to them, look at that lowest floor slab structural design. There is no single pile tying this slab down to the soil mass underneath. I believe what I said is good enough for them to convey the message. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. I also found the language in the statement of facts a little bit confusing, because it's a new building that's also existing, so I think you just need to be consistent with calling it an existing building that was recently constructed and never refer to it as a new building, because that implies that it hasn't been built yet. There is, I also wanted to say, Chair, you said that the floor where the daycare is being proposed is in the cellar, but I believe it still qualifies as a basement, but it, because it's above the curb level?
Okay, so then the drawing is incorrect, the drawing...
There are a lot of things that are, nomenclature is incorrect on the drawings.
Okay.
It, the title blocks all say daycare at first floor, but then the first floor is also defined in the sections as the... also defined in the sections as the floor above the ground floor, right? The first usable floor above the flood resistant construction elevation. So we gotta go through and sweep all of the documents and make sure that however you're calling the ground floor, whether it's your basement level or your ground floor, or what, however you're calling it, it needs to be consistent throughout because it changes all over the drawings. The first floor plan is showing the ground floor plan when it should be showing what's really the second floor above curb level. So it makes it confusing. And obviously, for flood compliance, the first floor should technically be the one that's above the FRCE. So that's just like cleanup stuff. I don't think it fundamentally changes the findings. And I believe that they have been, or they can be met, based on the discussions that we have. I did have one issue with finding a CFO for the existing building. So there's, the applicant needs to file their own Alt.1 or, you know, their own project with DOB, but I can't find a TCO for the overall building. And I would like the applicant to clarify where the building stands in that process. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, being, being like below the design flood elevation doesn't make it cellar. I believe, based on my experience with the building code, cellar is 50%-
50%, yeah, I-
Engineers call it lowest floor. Lowest floor is, 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 is well defined, and when you say lowest, it's, it's there. You can, you can get to that floor.
Commissioner Yoon is absolutely correct. I mean, we need to be consistent, and it should follow the zoning terminology, because it is the document that is really going to allow for a waiver of a special permit pursuant to the zoning resolution. So, and I actually didn't check the level of the, why it was being called cellar, since it, the, the design flood elevation, it is more than 50% is above the design flood. So therefore, it would be a basement and not a cellar. So that needs to be corrected and needs to be consistent. And I would prefer it to be called basement, so that it's consistent with the way the zoning is going to be calculated and way the findings and the drawings are going to be presented at DOB. Thank you all.
The two decision to-
No, those are going, all the way at the end, and then, all the way at the end. So let's, we're at 11:10. So, so let's wait till, for 15 minutes, for everybody to-
Okay, so 11:25?
Yeah.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to resume at 11:25 for the public hearing. This concludes the review session.
Yeah.
Okay. 11:30.
I forward you that. This is the foundation plan. Look at it. I forward it to you. Yeah.
Why? Why should I want, like, what? You think it's just probably-
It's fun.
We'll go grab a stand, and I'll take a moment. Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we call the two items.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you, we, we have to do anything, Jay, can we be off the TCO? That's really important.
Yeah.
So I don't think they would need a, 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 a,
And this is Todd Dale, and I will make him a presenter. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Dale?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Anyone with you?
Sorry, still getting used to you. Uh, no, just myself this morning.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do affirm.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. I did listen to review session, and it seems the board is generally satisfied. We're very pleased, and I'd also like to thank the board for their efforts in review and comments they made. We're very pleased where this application has ended up. With respect to items to resolve, per Commissioner Sheta's suggestion, we can update the DOT note on the plans to highlight it, put it in a box, so it's more prominent. Just so the board's aware, the conversations are still going. We expect approval shortly. There's a question regarding one tree that I believe needs to be addressed, and so it's pending some parks approval before DOT can sign off, but we would agree that if the board's agreeable, were agreeable to any condition in any resolution should the application be granted. We also know that there are hazmat notes to be added to the plan. We can reach out to Ms. Benke and Ms. Prenga to find out what those notes are. So what we can do is update the plan with all of the hazmat notes, the vault note, submit them to the record, and then we can add them to the EAS and submit a revised EAS with the new plan.
So, just so I understand, the, our note will say that DOT to conduct review and complete review of the vault prior to requesting a building permit? Like, we couldn't make that a condition, right? Because barring that, if there is any change, it changes programmatically.
We're agreeable to whatever notes regarding the approval that the board wants. And I said, perhaps, you know, prior to the next appearance before the board, we can just confirm with the board what note they'd like and submit it. Just make sure that it satisfies what the board wants. I believe that the current note, just to clarify, the current note, I think, is, hang on. It's on the seller plan, and it currently reads DOT revocable consent or approval required. So we can highlight that in a separate box and add whatever additional conditions or disclaimers the board wants in the note. We're agreeable. And we can reach out off the record to find out what that is gonna constitute.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember how in the past I thought we did allow for DOT approval later or maybe we had DOT-approved plans for the vault. I'm trying to make sure we're consistent.
Did we outline it in dashes, maybe? Kind of like we approached greenhouses and had subject to DOT approval or subject to DOB approval for the greenhouses?
So you don't want to leave it off the
Right, so you don't leave it off the plan, but you dash it.
Okay. So definitely, I think what you have right now is, should stay on the plan with the note, subject to DOT approval, very much so. But if you're saying you're very close to getting a DOT approval, I think it would be ideal if we get that sign off and that actually, prior to our vote or something, that would actually make it even better. Is that possible?
I understand, and I don't want to seem difficult. How is this? We'll definitely try and try and get it to you, but since we're dealing with other agencies and we're not sure how long these approvals are going to take, I don't want to get this in a situation where this is constantly being deferred at the board while we wait for DOT. And also, you know, should the board be inclined to grant, receive the resolution, allow DOB plan review and the DOB process to continue? Or at least, it'll allow the architectural team to move forward with the BSA-approved plans with the DOT plan is, approval's pending. So I understand, in a perfect world, that would be our preference also. But if the board's agreeable, we would respectfully request a conditional note. The plan does have the vault shaded in gray. We can shade it or include a note, however the board prefers. But if at all possible, our respectful request is that it could be granted on condition, just because we're never sure how long another agency's gonna take.
Yeah, no, the hazmat note needs to be added. I think the hazmat review is complete, right, Ms. Benke?
Yes, the complete, yes, it's complete. So it could be added prior to vote.
Yeah. So
And we'll reach out and what notes are required in the plan.
Right, so we could do that. We could do, it's a belt and suspender type of thing. But I also would say that prior to securing any permit, you need the DOT approval. Right?
Very reasonable. I don't think they would allow us to start, you know, start the foundation without having approval to, you know, for the vault, for the foundation. So I believe that that's reasonable.
Okay.
I want to ask you something. Just have the architect call out, you said it's shaded, and I saw that. Just have the architect, like, put an arrow, call out that shading, and call it vault encroachment point. BSA is not taking any position. We can't forward you the language. But put something like, BSA is not taking position on the encroachment of the vault. Vault encroachment should be subject to DOB review and DOT approval.
That's fine.
And then make that, like I said, I'm sorry, make that like double font for whatever text on the drawing and put it inside a box. So it's the plan examiner, when he looks at that drawing, that would catch his eye. So it's easier to
So what we will do, Commissioner Sheta, please draw the language and send it to the council?
Yeah.
And that will be shared with Mr. Dale. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Dale? And we need a revised EAS.
Correct. So what I believe the proper order will be is that we will confirm the notes to be added, the hazmat notes and the vault notes. And then we'll submit the plans with those revised notes, and we'll submit the revised EAS that include the plans, replacing the prior plans, and submit that EAS.
Yeah. Yeah, and also, not only the notes, also the hazmat notes?
Yes, yes. So DOT notes, hazmat notes, and then, once they're in the plans, we'll submit the plans and the EAS which include the plans.
Right. Okay.
And we'll send a sample of just the DOT note. As I said, we'll discuss it with board staff and council. We could submit a copy of the proposed plan, sort of off the record, prior to submission.
Okay. That works. If there are no questions for Mr. Dale from our board, let's then go to the public. Thank you, Mr. Dale.
The case we are currently discussing is 202278BZ, 1512 Union Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, dial 646-893-7107101. You will enter phone conference ID number 15318462 and the pound sign. There will be a brief hold, and you will wait to be admitted. Once you're admitted, you will press star five to raise your hand. Star six two on mute to be able to speak. If you're calling in the web, you can go to our website. Press the meeting ID number is 258570, shoot, 541752. And the passcode is uppercase F, lowercase e, uppercase J, uppercase W, the number three, and an uppercase H. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. How much time do you need, Mr. Dale?
We will be able to turn this plan around as quickly as we receive approval from the BSA with respect to the language. So within a week, if not sooner. Not to put the pressure on the board, sent us the note, but
I'm going to make a recommendation unless yeah, I'm going to make a recommendation that we close this application. Keep the record open for the revised set of information.
Time hasn't run out yet. Nothing yet. Thirty-seven seconds. Oh, okay.
Was that your alarm?
I forgot to make it louder, right?
Okay, okay, it was loud. All right. I'm going to make a motion to close, and our project manager will reach out to you with regards to the decision date.
Motion to close, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Okay, change it back. Okay. Item number 22202353BZ, 92 King Street, Brooklyn.
So I just made Mr. Wright and Kenneth
Oh, you already did it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought I just did Kenneth to he's showing up as guest. That should be okay, right?
Yeah, I should be able to make him an attendee, presenter.
Yeah, I made them both presenters.
Oh, okay. Is there anyone else?
Yes, for Mr. Wright and Kenneth, please unmute yourself and turn your camera on. Hello?
Yes, Mr. Wright, can you turn your camera on?
I did. Can you see me?
Nope.
Nope, yes, now I see you, Mr. Wright. I still don't see Mr. Philogene, Philogene, sorry.
Yeah, he should be on a minute. Me, it's kind of important to the presentation. Yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
I have to sway you in, but I have to wait for your
Is Mr. Philogene going to also join you?
There he is.
Okay. Okay, there. Your mic is on, Mr. Philogene?
Yes, it's on.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes. Can you both raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Chris Wright, Law Office of Christopher Wright.
And Ken Philogen.
Proceed, Mr. Wright.
Good morning. So I kind of broke the questions down into kind of three main categories. The FAR, the uniqueness, and the common ownership, and I can address all those. But I would think, I just think because the board asked us to take a hard look revised project, I thought Ken could open up by talking about revised project and what we're trying to do there, if I may.
Yes, from the last meeting, we had proposed eighteen-foot front yard and maybe around fifteen-foot rear yard in order to use predominantly built-up, which we're entitled to use. So this time, we revised the plan, we kept the same FAR, and based on that feedback, last feedback we received, we reduced the front yard to only ten feet, which would require a waiver from the variance from the front yard. The rear yard is still not thirty feet, so we still need the waiver for the rear and the side yard is still applicable. The design was changed around to accommodate part of the, part of being in the flood zone area. Now, the rest of it, we could address it, as the commissioner mentioned, Sheta mentioned before earlier, we could address the requirement to make it fully flood-proof. And but in the meantime, we still entitled to the 1.65 FAR, something close to that amount. And we were wondering what, how would we move forward in order to address those waivers that were requested?
Thank you. We did mention all the changes that were made based on the comments at the hearing. However, as I clearly pointed out, the need for the additional waiver for the front yard is solely being driven by the want to maintain a 1.65 predominantly built-up FAR, which is an option. And since you're proposing to exercise that option, you are needing that waiver. And our question that goes to, I mean, and the biggest question at this point in the room is common ownership. Should you meet that threshold, you have to revise the uniqueness. And then that goes to the, what is the build context and the character of the neighborhood? And why therefore you need that 1.65 FAR? So far, as I said, every information that has been provided, though weak, whatever has been provided is not helping your argument for a 1.65. So if you do not need to provide 1.65, you don't need the front yard waiver. And everybody at this board, if you have heard our hearing very clearly, we think your 1.65 FAR, a single-family home, is extremely generous. And the ask almost doesn't seem warranted. So you need to, I, you know, there are many questions out here. The site plan is an issue at this point, the 1.65 FAR is an issue. But more importantly, common ownership is an issue because that affects your uniqueness, as Commissioner Otley Brown clearly pointed out. Because your analysis talks about there are other sites that are under common ownership that are less than twenty-five foot wide, and that they don't have the same burden. But this site was in common ownership as recent as 2005. And until
Okay, I, sorry, my mistake. Sorry, I finished here.
No, so I think that is a very big threshold question. And then, should you pass that, then the question becomes, why 1.65 FAR? We just don't see the justification based on what little information has been provided and which is driving your another hardship waiver. So you need to go back and look at everything from scratch, starting with finding D, then re-establishing your finding for uniqueness, and then go through the neighborhood character to find the appropriate density and with, based on that appropriate FAR and based on that how much of variance of the yards you would need. I think the only extent of the waiver that I think at this point is reasonable is rear yard. Because it is a shallow, and we have seen shallower lots seeking a rear yard waiver because you need a thirty-foot. But if it's a combined lot, maybe you don't even need that.
Okay, may I respond, though? I would like to address those issues, if you don't mind. Because I, you know, what I
Can we stop for a moment?
Sure.
I just want to say that the D-finding questions are very complicated and require a detailed answer, most probably in writing. I don't think that anything you say today is going to be able to convince this board.
Exactly.
And rather than say something that you might regret because it might result in you stepping clearly into a no-go zone, I think you should take this time to go back to the drawing board, carefully analyze all of our questions within the scope of your project, and come back with it in writing. That's what I believe.
I would second that.
I would second that.
And I would add to that, you need to provide a very detailed ownership analysis. Just don't rely on this actress thing. You need to provide a very detailed deed history, tracking the chain of title. All of that information needs to be provided to back up any argument that you might state today.
And also, if you're going to state that the tax lien is somehow a break-in chain of title sufficient to defeat common ownership in the D-finding, you'd have to support that with some cases, some precedent. So, again, and also, your A is going to have to be based on a study that shows... Depending on what you, what we get at at the end of the D. So anything we say now is really, I'm not sure, I think it can only hurt. So I think it'd be best to press on submission or wait for your submission to get your best arguments for a case here.
And, Mr. Wright, any deed finding or history should include the subject lot and all of the adjacent lots? Please, thank you.
I think that's there, okay, anyway. I think, okay. Okay, fine. I mean, I think I can address all these issues. I think it's just clarification. I believe the project still stands. But the only, we just want to stick with one proposal or another. I mean, I don't want, I don't want, the only thing I'm asking is last time we did the eighteen-foot front yard, this time we did the ten-foot front yard that the board asked us to do. I think we believe that's the best option, so we're going to try to stick to that over the FAR.
Mr. Wright, Mr. Wright, please, I'm going to stop you right there. Please do not make these assumptions until you have established D and A.
I understand that, I will establish this, I can do that.
And do not try to back into your solution. Because at this point, this board is not convinced. Even if you think you have established uniqueness, you have established the common ownership answer and you have established the uniqueness, you have not at all convinced us on the neighborhood character that would attribute to the minimal hardship that you're seeking, which goes to your want to pick a 1.65 FAR for a predominantly built-up and therefore a front yard waiver is required. Please, I'm telling you, you have two major hurdles you have to cross. And do not back into a 1.65 answer. It is not going to work. You're already hearing no's from all of us. If you think you're going to convince us, I think you will be wasting everybody's time. I'm sincerely telling you this.
I'm not planning to talk anymore. That was just my only question. Okay, I understand, let us get back to you, okay?
No, no, he said talk, he's not going to talk anymore.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Let's go to the public.
Okay. The case that we're currently discussing is 202353BZ, 92 King Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss? Put your screen up, okay, thank you. You may dial 646-839... Eight-nine-three, I'm sorry, 7101. You will enter the phone conference ID number as 15318462 and press the pound sign. There'll be a brief hold, wait to be admitted. You'll press star five to raise your hand, star six to unmute. And if you're calling in, if you're accessing it by the web on our website, the meeting ID number is 258570541752. And the passcode is capital F, lowercase e, uppercase J and W, the number three, and uppercase H. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. Let me take a picture of that screen again.
I think you will need a fair amount of time. I would strongly suggest that we reschedule this for September.
That's fine.
No one here? Thirty-four seconds.
I know they have the calendar in front of me, you have dates?
The September hearing date is September ninth or tenth with a submission date of August 22nd.
Okay.
Or there's late September, which is, sorry, late September, which would be September 30th to, or October 1st. I think we'll probably put you on...
You can...
And September 12th, but you can reach out to the project manager.
What's the submission date for September 30th? Sorry.
September 12, nine-ten would be August 22nd.
I would say the later.
The later one would be September 12th for the end of September.
No, I'm just... My question was, sorry, maybe it wasn't clear. If we do September 30th, what's the submission date?
September 12th.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. All right, so we will schedule you for the second hearing in September, September 30th. Submission date being...
September 12th.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 2320... 202368BZ.
This would be Frank Chaney.
Frank Chaney, I already made him presenter.
You have made him presenter?
Yeah, eight-des, ten Grand Avenue, anyone, oh, sorry. Is there anyone else with him, you know? I don't know this.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else needs to be...
I don't see...
I don't see anyone else.
Yeah. Mr. Chaney, can you put your camera and mic on, please?
Yes?
I hear you, but I do not see you, sir.
Is there anyone else from your team?
Yeah.
You can't see me?
No, no, I can't see you. It may take a minute, I think, yeah.
I don't know, it's turned up...
It should be on the top, if you're in teams, it should be on the top where it has a little camera.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
For some reason...
This is happening now, happening to me also. It's freezing.
Yeah, you need to come back in and out, Commissioner Sheta?
Well, I can try logging off and logging back in, if you're willing to wait.
No, wait. Mr. Chaney, could you please just turn your camera on and off? See if that fixes the issue? See where the camera's on the top?
I'm way back one minute. Yes.
Yes, you are. Yeah.
I can't turn it off. It's just on, it says it's on, and when I click on it, it won't go off. Let me try more video effects.
There he is.
There we go, yay!
Okay, oh, good. I'm not as clear or literate as I've seen.
Is there anyone else with you, Mr. Chaney?
There was supposed to be. Matt Sloan from...
I see him, I will, I'll admit him.
You'll let him in?
Presenter, yeah.
And I think Jessica is supposed to be here.
I don't see Jessica anywhere.
I do not see Jessica.
I know she was earlier.
She said she was going to log back in.
I do not see her, but do you need her?
I don't think so, based on the comments, I think we're probably okay in terms of the finding.
Okay, so let's wait for Mr. Sloan to come in. There he is, I'm sorry. Raise your right hand. What? Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sorry, in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Okay, my name is Frank Chaney. I'm the land use attorney for the applicant. And we were all on the review session this morning and very happy to hear that the board appears to be largely okay with the application as revised. There's the compliments that I think we need to respond to, the one having to do with the closed stairway on the fourth and seventh floors. And we will revise the note, which was added to say that both the doors and the windows, I confirmed that with the architect, they both will be, the doors and the windows will be removed and infilled with appropriately fire code compliant materials. So we'll change that note and resubmit the proposed set of drawings.
I think, if I recall, fire department want, didn't want the door to be clo... They wanted the door to be closed with a hard, some heavy-duty door, but not cinder block, I think.
Do you want to add John to the room?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Chief Daly, I apologize for the improper...
That's what I have in my note. Chief Daly saying that. That stair A on fourth and seventh floor still needs to be accessed in the event of fire, so need to provide a heavy door, seal the window opening, but not the door opening.
Okay.
Chief Daly, I...
I may have been misstating what the architect told me, but obviously, we'll do what's required.
I don't have presenter, I don't see him.
And we'll make that note, change the note.
Right, so when I say the doors need to be sealed, it's like you need to seal it with a heavy-duty door, which is locked and, but can still be accessed for.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Chief Daly's in the room, but I made him a presenter. I don't know why he's not able to. Can you turn your camera on and microphone, Chief?
Yes, we can see you, Chief Daly.
Okay, it worked, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Sorry for delay, learning new things, old man here. I heard your comments, Commissioner Shampa, and I agree with them, make the openings with a heavy-duty door that we can still access, we greatly appreciate it, thank you.
And Chief Daly, we will need a sign-off from Fire Department regarding this plan, this case.
Okay, right, once I get the, if they could CC me on the new plan, I will prepare that letter and forward it to submit at NYBSA.
Have a question regarding the heavy door. Is there any particular minimum code compliant, or it can be just...
It should be an hour and a half rated door.
Okay. Hour and a half rated door.
One and a half hour rated door.
So if you could just, Mr. Chaney, then if you can add that to your note saying, "And the door shall be closed with an hour and a half rated door."
Okay, I'll relay that to the architect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Daly.
And so, I think the only other comment that was made that I think we should provide a response to had to do with the environmental review and responding to comments from DEP. And I'm going to let Matt summarize that for you. Matt's from the Matrix, our environmental consultant.
Hi, everybody, Dr. Frank said, this is Matt Sloan for Matrix New World Engineering. We're presenting the applicant in the secret process. We submitted a revised version of the EAS to BSA on May 2nd, which contained the additional air quality analyses that were requested as well as the updated WOP analysis, which we received consistency concurrence on, and the original noise analysis that was performed as part of the original EAS. The applicant is currently working with DEP to work out a hazardous materials work plan for sampling at the site. That is ongoing and will be summarized in the EAS as necessary. So, the document otherwise is with BSA and we're awaiting their feedback and/or approval.
Yeah, so while the application may meet the findings, I think in this case, the SECR review needs to be completed. This is a variance, right? Yes.
Yes.
Not a special permit, right, there's a variance. So, we, and any changes that comes as a result of the review regard, from the SECR and that requires changes to the plans, the plans would need to be revised accordingly. Any other questions or comments? Let's go to the public, then.
So the case that we're currently discussing is 202368BZ, eight-dash-ten Grand Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss? Are you putting up, thanks? Dial 646-893-7101. You will enter the phone conference ID number 15318462 and press the pound sign. There will be a brief hold where you wait to be admitted. Once you're admitted, you will press star five to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to be heard. Someone's notes are on the screen.
We are seeing someone's screen being shared.
Okay. If you're entering by the web at our, and you can go through that through our website, the meeting ID number would be 258570541752. And the passcode is uppercase F, lowercase e, uppercase J, uppercase W, the number three, and an uppercase H. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. So we're just waiting for anyone to show up.
No, we're putting a note.
Right. So, also, the note that Commissioner Sheta stated regarding the staircase, please do add that. We can supply you with the language. Commissioner Sheta will provide the language.
I didn't, I didn't ask him to add the language. I just said, I asked them to clarify about the nature of the repairs and they didn't, and I'm not taking position in looking at, like, looking at these repairs.
So you just want, you said it on the record?
You just want, okay, got it.
About structural.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, thank you for the clarification, okay. I'm going to make a recommendation that we, since the findings have been met for 7221, I make, I would like to make a recommendation that we close it, but the record remains open
Sorry.
for the SECR, completion of the SECR review. And if, as outcome of the SECR review, any notes need to be added to the plan, the plans would need to be revised accordingly. Do you want a timeframe for...
Could I just ask, I'm not sure I caught what the clarification Commissioner Sheta is looking for on, is it on the plans?
You don't have to worry about it. At last hearing, I said there is an item in the construction course that says SECR repairs for the stairs. And I did ask whether these repairs are structural in nature. I didn't get an answer, but I'm fine with that. And I did put a disclaimer that the board didn't look at any structural drawings or details. So you don't have to worry about it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I received no phone calls and I don't see anyone else with their hands up. Do you want to call a roll?
Yeah.
For the motion to close, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye. It will be scheduled based on when the SECR is close to signing off and the plans have been revised accordingly, if needed. Okay?
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and for your patience.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 242024BZ. And this is Felice Foladere.
I thought I saw her in the room.
There she is, I got her. I got her, I'm sorry. I did, I did, thank you, sorry.
Hi, can you see me? I can't see you.
Yes, we can see you.
Yes, we can see you.
I have no idea what I look like.
Thank you. Is there anyone with you, Ms. Foladere?
Yeah, Amber, and I just admitted her. Yeah, Amber, and I just admitted her, if that's okay.
Amber.
Amber, calculating.
Yes, I see her, I, I.
And then I should also have Russ.
Who?
And who?
Russ.
I don't see him.
Don't.
R U S S.
Don't see.
Brussels.
Do not see.
I can try to call him.
Yeah.
Hey. And, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
I don't see anybody other.
No, I do not see anybody. I see Ms. Jessica Kur on the thing, um, we just closed on Grand Street, if that's what you are still on the, okay, she just left.
Yeah, she left, Todd still did that, but that's okay. Um, I don't see them, can we start without them maybe, or is it the necessities that they, no, mm. Okay, we can't start without them, they're vital, okay.
Okay, uh, maybe we can, uh, hmm.
Right, she said she called them.
Sorry, I went right to his voicemail with his office, so now I'm gonna try his cell, but I spoke to him ten minutes ago about this application, I think it's confusing to some people that you do comments and then they think it's over, you know?
You have the call in number six four six eight nine three seven one oh one, he can call in, I mean, if he can't make, I don't know. Needs to go to a, you can go to a webpage and click into the, put the member ID numbers on. Do you want to do that? But.
The thing is you, oh. Let's see if you, if she was able to get her, if not.
Yeah, see if she can get him in.
Uh, Ms. Foladere, if you're not able to, we can, uh, we can take, uh, about a twenty minute break, and then you can all get your group together and we will start with you.
Twenty minutes.
Or, what time is it, it's twelve ten, so we can do a thirty minute break, that'll give you enough time to get your team together, and we can resume.
Maybe you could do it like a ten minute break, I, yeah, okay, um, Amber, Amber, does that work for you, or is that probably?
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay, I'll just try to call him again.
Ten or thirty, which one?
Okay. Would you like ten minutes? I think ten should be enough, I'll just keep, cause I, we were literally on Amber with him ten minutes ago. I just emailed him as well, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so here's the thing, in terms of our timeline, we anyway have to take, uh, a break between the completion of the hearing to pick up the two cases. Can we combine it and make it thirty minutes so that it works for everybody? Does it work for you? Please?
Okay, so, okay.
Take a thirty minute break, please.
Amber, is that okay? Cause I know you're.
Yeah, I have a training at one, but I can, I can be a little late, that's fine.
We will, yeah, it's twelve, twelve, so we'll be at twelve forty, we'll resume, and we will start with you, and you'll have your team ready, and we'll get going on it.
Okay.
Okay?
It's a twelve thirty, you said?
Twelve forty.
Four forty, right?
Twelve forty.
Oh, twelve forty.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Carlo?
Thank you.
Ms. Springer, please put up the break slide.
Just gotta go look at the plans.
You just eat like in here?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Walk back over to my desk and come back from here. I do not like this bread. My shopper, my shopper by mistake got Hawaiian bread. It's too sweet.
Yeah, it's very sweet though.
Mm.
I don't like eating it, it's like other food, but I will eat it.
Yeah, a little toasted or something, I didn't realize, and I said, I didn't even look at the label, cause I was like, okay, I ordered bread, I clicked on it, and I must have made the mistake, or he made the mistake, cause I'm looking at, I would see it said Hawaiian bread.
Do you bring your food online?
Mm-hmm. And, I don't know, something, what is it? I said, wait a minute, what's this taste?
Yeah, it's, because it's too sweet, unless you're, I guess it's good with like pulled pork sandwiches, or like, I feel, I feel like there's like a thing where you eat certain kind of barbecue.
But now that I bought it, I don't want to, you know, I spent the money on it.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't want to waste it.
I don't want to waste it, otherwise I'd throw up the whole, throw out the whole damn thing.
That's the thing with shopping at Weg, there's a Wegmans in Brooklyn, and, uh, it's all Instacart people, it's all people who order online, and so you're just there with the, all these people who are just like. Looking at their phone. They're trying to shop as fast as, it, it like really harshes the whole grocery shopping experience, everyone's like a gig worker, you know, and they're trying to do it as fast as possible. Anyway.
You all right?
Yeah.
This one's gonna take a couple of minutes because of this delay now.
So I gotta leave soon.
And then, the two decision cases.
They showed me how to shut it off.
Okay, and how to put it back on?
Yeah, it's just muted.
Okay.
But it looks really good on my end.
It looked good on YouTube, too.
It sounds good, it, you know, the, like, I think here and there, like, we have to sort out, but.
My concern is, no one's calling in, is there a problem? Are we giving them enough time?
I don't know, I, I, you know, no one's called, no one's reached out.
I don't know.
It's already on YouTube, it's, uh, the website was updated. You know, we have little things to work out, you know?
I don't know.
But listen, considering I have three days.
You're amazing, Carlo, that's all I gotta say.
I don't know.
You need to be paid like three hundred thousand dollars. You do.
No.
Listen, computer tech people, they get big money, come on.
No, listen, I couldn't have done it without.
Please, Carlo. This'll probably take a half an hour with, uh.
Let's see what the doctor says.
Then, um, Jella has, Jella's gonna be gone.
Yeah.
Ch, uh, what's his name, Stolo Brown, right? Yeah, let me know, I mean, my goodness, you gonna be in tomorrow?
Yeah.
Chase is not here either?
Today, no, but he's, he's here tomorrow. I mean, I should be in tomorrow.
No, I'm talking about on here. Chase bounced out. I know he has that thing at work.
Friday I have my, uh, physical therapy, the first one.
For what, for your shoulder? I said why, but. Be careful with physical therapy, can I make a suggestion, take a Tylenol before you go?
Yeah, the doctor said, look, he goes, sometimes like they do scratching and stuff like that, we'll see, um, but there was no tears, no nothing in, uh, in this case, whatever, that's all, nothing in this, but rotator cuff.
I have a porcelain tom, rotator cuff, can't do anything with it.
Yeah. I just ate.
By mistake, my, my, my shopper gave me Hawaiian bread.
Oh, I like the Hawaiian bread.
Maybe when it's toasted, I don't eat it often, my daughter likes the, the.
The roast.
The gluten free Hawaiian bread.
Yeah.
So I tasted, cause I didn't have any bread, so she said, oh, cause whenever she comes over, I get a small one, right? And you can freeze it. So we can use and stuff, it's sweet, though, so he picked it up and I'm going, what's wrong with this bread? And then I look at the package and I go, oh shit, he picked up Hawaiian bread.
He gave me a good idea when the kids were little.
That we, it was, it's too sweet.
When the kids were little.
It's too sweet.
I used to buy.
Cause I always always buy King Hawaiian, too, for the kids.
We used to buy the, the, the slider sauce.
King's Hawaiian.
Yeah, the big pack. And what I used to do was, and make hamburgers.
Yeah, that's what we used to do.
On the grill. And I'd buy a can of pineapples, you know, the, the, the circle pineapples?
Oh.
And I toast them on the grill.
Oh, wow.
So I'd make like Hawaiian style.
Yeah, my kids really like pineapples.
Yeah, but the, you know, the kids were little, so it was cute, I used to do that, and I used to make them English muffin pizzas.
We always made English muffin pizzas, that was, that was a treat for us.
So when, when the kids were.
We'd watch TV, a movie, we'd go movie night, and we'd go, we, we'd put the English muffins, we'd toast them, then we'd put them in the oven, and my mother would make different versions, and we'd all sit and we'd have movie night.
So I used to make, uh, you know, sauce, like on a Sunday, and then we'd freeze.
Which my mother used to do.
Take one, one thing out, heat it up, and, uh.
She put the cheese and the mozzarella and all that shit.
They used to have the, the, remember the deals, like you, you buy one pack English one, you get the second one, so I'd get like four, cut them a lot, I'd slightly toast them all in the oven, and then I put the cheese, the mozzarella.
Well, my mother used to do is toast them.
Yeah.
Then she put them in the, she put the sauce and the cheese and.
Yeah.
Whatever little toppings and stuff, put them in the oven, and we'd have, she'd have like several baking sheets.
Yeah.
My honor, it was a.
When my kids were young, there were a lot of kids on the block, so they used to play in the alley, nonstop, all day, all day. So I used to make the English muffin. Hey, also, there's twenty kids in my, my yard, so we, I'd make.
No, my mother never, damn, my mother did, uh, ICs, she'd be buying bulk ice, ice, and you know, the kids were playing, and she'd go, okay, you want some drinks, she'd get little drinks, the little juicy things, little juices, or she'd give out, um, the ICs.
They used to get the family pack of hot dogs, with the buns, and, uh, whatever, you know, it's twenty four hot dogs, whatever, sometimes I'd get two, just put them on the grill, I had my little charcoal grill, and, come on, kids, you know, and we'd give them out, and, uh, even a neighbor got one, then we had a nice family that lived next to us, and they built one of these charcoal barbecues, you know when they take like a drum?
Oh, shit.
They cut them in. They used to make, oh my God, they would barbecue.
A pig, probably, cow.
It was like hours, seafood, skirt steaks.
Oh my God.
They make the chicharrones, what's that called, uh?
Chicharrones.
No, not the chicharrones.
Hi.
No.
No.
No, you're coming in, we thought you had something. No, no, I know you were coming for something important.
Yeah, that, I, that's why I turned. When, when the director of the management of reviews comes into a room.
I didn't have time to get my lunch, so, uh, I'm waiting till this here, so.
I'm gonna be leaving soon.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you when you're leaving, but tomorrow you'll be here, okay, we have those fun meetings tomorrow.
Secret meetings?
Edgewater.
Jesus.
Just in case, because I got it now muted.
Yeah.
Something.
I know.
Capisce?
I know.
Capisce?
I know.
Good luck at the doc.
Yes.
I went, we today was, uh, the Grown Ups Who Love You Day at school.
Oh, I miss all those little fun, this, the, the, what is it called, the, in June, they always had the school dance thing outside in the, in the playground area.
They had a carnival on last weekend.
Carnivals and all that stuff, but yeah.
And you were in charge of this kind.
Yeah, let me tell you, too fast, too fast.
Suzie's having a problem with phone, she's like maxed out, like her hard drive. It's an older iPhone, so, it tells the, you know, you just pay off like the other kids' phones and stuff, so.
That's what, I need a new phone, I have this eleven, I need a new phone and a case, and I'm just like, not.
She was upset.
I, I don't want to get another bill, like, I, I've already paid off the phone and everything, it's just like you're gonna.
Suzie used to be very organized, like with her albums and stuff, and then just all the time, like you saw, you changed phones, you know, so it's like backed up onto the drive, it's over here, it's over there, so, I don't know, she was all frustrated. So we, the last two nights, at night, we've been going through and downloading from Google Drive and putting it on like a hard drive and flash traps, so she could watch stuff on TV, and we're cannibalizing, right? So all of a sudden, there's something, it was like an email or something that was like some bird, she's, what's that? It's not a phone, it was a recording I did with Matthew.
Oh.
It was about three, four.
Oh my God.
So I don't know what we were doing, I put like a drum beat in my studio, and we were, I was teared up, it was like.
Oh, he was three, oh my God.
Three, four, like maybe four, and it's so sweet, and I was like, you know, what happened?
What happened?
No, no, it was so sweet, but.
How's he doing, good? Hanging out there?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's always fun.
I can't wait for the day that the Googie goes out and, like, forget it, the boys are there, and it's like, forget it.
Yeah, you might imagine that.
Yeah, I know what's gonna happen, my brother just, he was working at a restaurant for the last thirty, uh, twenty years, he, he's like, he just, he saw me and he was like, I'm gonna have a, I'm getting a paralegal job part time, I was like, what? So he started, and he said he, he negotiated, like someone gave him a chance, like, you know, he has a college degree, but, uh.
Dana's girlfriend just got a cute job.
Yeah?
And she's going back to school. And she's going back to school. She, she finished her social, she's doing that. So she, she had a job at the Museum of Ice Cream.
Oh, no, really? I saw pictures of that, too. Oh, my God.
Like, in a week or two, so she, she's.
Oh, my God, that must be fun, though.
Perfect little.
That must be fun, though.
Cause then you get cultural experience.
Yeah, she's very friendly.
That's great.
Yeah, once you start working in that area, Diana's friend, Jessica, she's, uh, she took art history and all this other stuff. So she was working in the museums and she went from one place to another. And then she would buy art for the corporations and stuff, so it snowballed and things like that. But now she does, what does she do? Oh, she's a teacher. So she's a teacher. And she has crazy students. We laugh hysterical when she tells us what they write, when they, she shows us their reports and stuff. And their analysis of the artwork and everything. It's hysterical. But she's really good. But all she does is she gives tours in, what she does now, or every time she gives tours, in the cemetery, in Greenwood Cemetery.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And she said Halloween is one of the best, one of the best and it's most attended Halloween.
Yes. And we met a young lady that, uh, when I went for my, no, Sabrina had her M R, which her herself. So the receptionist, the, you know, was very, very sweet, you know, very friendly. And, uh, I went in with Su- uh, Sabrina, Suzie can't, claustrophobic, Suzie passed on. So I was like, I'll go with you. Yeah, so I was like, I'll go. But I said, it's her foot, it's, you know, but whatever. So we come out and, um, and it took, like, maybe half hour, forty minutes. We come out and Suzie's, like, saying goodbye to the reception. She's like, ah. So when we got into the car, she goes, wow, she goes, what an impressive young lady. She goes, she's in school. And I think while she was in school, she took some extra, like, courses, I guess they had, like, a certification for, like, uh, billing, medical, whatever.
Coaching and stuff, yeah.
She was working there. And she was like, you know, it's a nice job. I said, give us that, that's actually really smart, like, like, while you're going to school, like, a billing. But that's good. So I was telling Dan, I said, you know, that, maybe if you wanna, like, do that, like, while you work at Masters, you know? Those are, those are nice jobs, like, uh, or, I know they have the technicians, like, that are more involved, but like, uh.
Depends. You get those side jobs. I do it at everything, gosh.
It's just nice to see, like, you know.
Well, expand yourself, so you have different marketable skills, too.
But that's, like, a nice job, like, a nice, you know, nice environment, you know?
School, too.
And you go to school and, you know.
I'm ready to fall asleep.
I could take. Tracy, you go with trains?
Where are you going? But now in Brooklyn.
So I'm thinking, I'm gonna go to Union Square, get the L train, page me right there by Whitehall Petasman.
Oh, you're going to Whitehall?
I'm not going to Whitehall, cause she's, like, across the street.
Oh.
But I, I can take, like, the four or the five express to Union Square.
Yeah, it's like, two stops.
It's like, yeah.
Or one stop.
It's not that far.
I think it's one stop.
Express is one, not from here, though. This side.
From Chambers.
From Chambers. From Chambers, City Hall to Union Square, it's one stop.
It's Brooklyn Bridge.
Brooklyn Bridge, correct.
Yeah, I think it's one stop to use.
Yeah, right. But which one? It, it's.
Four or five.
The four or the five.
You can get on the six, then it's like.
But that's local, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Yeah, right here.
I mean, I haven't taken, I'll be checking.
Because if it really takes me, like, a block away.
I don't think, Derek takes that up for the six.
Is that in your hospital or at the Winthrop with your husband?
You know, I don't really, so, no, no, it's just, my doctor happens to be there.
Oh, by that Eric?
Yeah, it's funny, they, they were my mom's doctor.
Oh.
And what happened was, too sweet, she always said to me, like, you know, the doctors, they're, they're two partners, so. When are you coming to us, you know?
I don't get on downtown. I did that one. It's like, oh, I'm going to Union Square, for some reason, I can't.
Oh, yeah, they don't go to Brooklyn, or downtown, or whatever.
I did that once.
So.
And I fell asleep on the train.
Oh, no.
I had a massive headache. I came down the stairs and I saw the first train. I'm going, okay, so I put my head back and I'm gone. And it was going uptown. I was, I was in Queens before I even realized what the hell I was. Roosevelt, and I'm like, oh, my God.
Also, one time, like, you know, you know when you don't really have, like, a doctor, you know, you're bouncing around? I think Sue wasn't feeling good or something, you know? I suggested, I said, quote to them, they're really nice, you know? She said, oh, no. So she went, she came back, she's like, I love them, right? So whatever, she would go and every time she went, cause she's good, she's diligent, you know, they'd be like, where's Carlo? Like, when is he coming here, right? And I was like, yeah, 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 you know, I never go to doctors. But then when I started not feeling good, uh, I was like, you know what? I don't know if I was taking her and stuff, and she, I was like, as I walked in, and they were like, who, who's here, you know? And it just happened that they just stayed, and I liked, you know, they're really nice. And they're both good, like, they're, they're nice.
Were they affiliated with them?
Whitehall.
Whitehall, yeah.
Uh, I actually live closer to Northwell.
That's not my Northwell, that's, it's, it's Winthrop, isn't it? Not Northwell, is it?
No, they're different.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Winthrop. Their oncology, uh, the, like, blood work.
Yeah.
Sabrina had, uh, she was anemic since she was born. We went to Winthrop. Uh, Winthrop is expanding a little bit.
Yes, my, my son, when he was living with Cornell, he liked it, for the blood.
Yeah.
Cornell's a good, they used to have a good, I don't know what they have now, but they had a very good, um, uh, blood, um, what do you call it? Blood, it was blood and, uh, it was like, um, what do you call it? What the heck is that? Genetic testing and stuff, like, to see what it was, cause he has a thalassemia trait.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's predominant in him. I'm the carrier's predominant. It's funny, it's like, my daughter doesn't, one daughter doesn't have it. Diana found it when she was doing the antitist, and she has it. But it's more, it, Jenny doesn't have it, but it's, uh, it's predominant, but you know, Lisa carries stuff, but his kids doesn't have, his kids don't have it.
Yeah. Now, Winthrop knows what, do you bet her not? I don't know what it's called now, but, like, her bad stuff. Like, an accident, you know, something like Elmer's. It's a level four or five.
I know.
Trauma center.
But it's a zoo in there. I'm sorry, it's a zoo. It's a zoo where my husband was injured at work. I know, but it's, when my husband was injured at work.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
But it's like, I mean, you know which one is.
But you know, NYU Langone is a level one or two, um, hospital.
Yeah.
And for years, when we went through there, disgusted. Now, I mean, the E R is still, the E R has improved a lot. And when you're in Long, Lutheran.
Okay.
Lutheran.
Cause like, all my doctors are NYU Langone, but I never visited, like.
No.
That's certainly Good Street and First.
Okay.
In Brooklyn. But it's improved and they've expanded their facilities. They even closed down the nursing home to put it, expand in their facilities. But the, the, the E R used to be so atrocious. Then it got much better. It's cleaner, but it's not, it's what, more well-maintained than it was before.
Yeah.
But it's still a trauma center.
I learned with my mom that, like, my mom mainly went to Whitehall, right, cause it was right there. And her doctors are there. But one time, like, we went to Northwell, you know? And again, they're, they're, I love. The, the care that she got, like, in the emergency room and stuff like that was really good, you know? They were very facilitated. But I have to say, in the end of the day, it really comes down to.
The doctors.
And the nurses.
Yep.
Because you could be.
That's why.
In the crappiest place.
The new.
But the care is right.
Yeah. The new hospital where I gave birth, though, and it was beautiful. But I, I still got in a fight with the nurse. It's like, it doesn't matter.
My daughter, my daughter was baby, my grandson was born in Yopis, Sanne, Mount Sinai, right?
That's where I did Skyward, then I switched to Wild Cornell, cause my doctor switched. And it's a brand new.
Mount Sinai, forget it. The nurse was, like, standing there, like, uh.
I had really great nurses when I.
Like this, like, where are we going with the baby? I love this crap, but I'm.
That was how the Wild Cornell one was. I never fight with people, but I was like, I said, you can leave me with my baby, leave.
Yeah.
I was just like, I don't remember what she did, but she, oh, man.
Even, even other care, like, we have.
Yeah.
There was one, my mom, one time. Man, but one of the lady aides that worked there, I mean, she deserved a medal. She was so sweet, so kind to my mom. Little things, like, just doing her cake, you know, just, like, extra. It was just like, you know, that, that.
I thought you were gonna leave.
No, jealous even. I, I was having my thing before, but, I had my school event this morning.
Oh, so jealous is in the afternoon. I see God.
And I'm leaving.
School events day.
Yeah.
Hey, I'll hear. I was going to discuss, um, Brighton first, and then vote. Is that how you're gonna go?
Yes.
What do you mean?
You have a, Elise's case.
Yeah, we're gonna hear Brighton and then you.
Okay.
We'll just, but, uh, we won't take a break now, because I reviewed everything.
Awesome.
Did you read something?
No. I cannot review this.
You say.
Without the mail. So I had the, I couldn't, so I was looking at that and making sure I had everything and looking at the plan.
Drinking water. She had a fill-out form about me. She said, she said, it was really fun. She doesn't know my age, so. Hey, where did come? She said I like sushi, which is true. She said.
Do you like su- that you like it?
It was, like, all about me, like, all about mom. And it was like, she likes sushi, she likes doing push-ups, which I've never done a push-up.
Right.
Like, in front of her in my life, uh.
She's trying to say a joke.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My favorite always been, can I, like, play with like.
Oh, right. That's not a bad thing.
No, it was pretty good.
Think it's nice and they go so far.
He said that Derek was one, it's like, I've never run.
I never had to tell someone, shut up, you're killing yourself. You're digging the hole deeper.
Yeah.
There's a threshold matter, so. Ready?
Are we ready?
Oh, no, no, wait, we have. No, no, they're coming, they're coming. They're coming, they're just going to.
Did they find her?
See an answer. Tony just looked at you and said, let's go.
Yeah.
Come.
Oh, he's there, in the bathroom.
Who?
The person that had a decent thing.
Excuse me?
The person that had a decent thing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna make the person, uh, to present her.
So you got him already?
Yeah.
Chop up? Yeah, yes, we have these. Anyone else? It was Elise, Amber, which you already had, right?
Right.
And Ruslan.
Okay, everyone, welcome back. Uh, we're, we're resuming after our, our short break. Um, Ms. Mathias, we are live, we are streaming. You may proceed with the, uh, with the public review. Uh, yes, public review. Thank you.
Good afternoon. We're back on the record. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. We are recalling, uh, twenty twenty-four, O two B Z, fifty-six Brighton, Eleventh Street, Brooklyn.
Uh, I think, uh.
You wanna take the screen down, Jella?
I see, um, Ms. Pollardair, Ms. Cartanian, and also Ruslan Goychew. I'm sorry, I'm not pronouncing.
Perfect.
Ruslan is easier. I'm sorry.
Is my camera not?
Put on your.
Yeah, your camera has to be.
A microphone.
And my microphone. Can you all hear me? Okay, is your team now there? All three of you?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for your patience. Uh, we had a, okay, thank you.
I don't see, um.
Ruslan?
Mr. Goychew.
Goychew. Uh, Mr. Goychew, please turn your camera on. Yes, there he is. Thank you. On your microphones, answer. Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All ready? Um, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do. I do, thank you.
Okay, please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Thank you. Elise Pollardair from Eric Palatnik P C. Thank you so much for your comments earlier. I have here with me Amber, who you all know, who has prepared the E A S and can speak to those comments, and Russ, the architect. Um, there were some of those comments, I wanted to make sure he was on. So thank you for giving us a little time there. Um, I'm gonna just start going through the comments and I'll turn to each of the various consultants as we get to the comments. So the first was, I just wanna clarify something. The zoning chart to include lot area, or you discussing the zoning, B S A zoning analysis form?
Um, the zoning chart that is submitted as part of the application package.
The B S A one, though, not the plan.
The, the B S A one, yes, yes.
Okay, no problem. So we can add to that. That is not a problem. Um, the next comment I have is the affidavit um, from Kinderville about, um, an emergency plan for flood, to, to remove the children if there's a flood. I'm assuming that's what you mean. Um, uh, the client, I spoke with the operator, Leila. She provided me with a sample from the place she works now. But I would ask if you have, uh, a sample that you can send me from any other application, can make sure we get you something that, um, is what you're looking for.
This is a sample for the evacuation.
You sent it an affidavit?
Yeah. Um, this is mostly for flood, really, but, uh, I'm assuming you have a, uh, we have not seen daycare facility in a flood zone. So that's why I'm asking for that information, if you.
Okay. So I, I guess we can provide an emergency plan, is what you're at, or just that we will have one? I guess I'm just trying to understand.
You, if you need to provide an, yeah.
My microphone.
An emergency action plan in case of flood, and which could be similar to what you have for fire, maybe. Similar, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, so you don't have any samples, so I'll try to send you a copy of something and see if that's what you're looking for.
Okay.
Correct. Um, uh, the narrative about future tents, apologies for any confusion, I can fix that easily. Um, the next, I'm gonna turn to Amber, cause the next few questions I have about, oh, I just wanna say one more thing, sorry. Um, there was a question about, uh, the certificate of occupancy and the D O H permit. We cannot get the D O H permit until we get a C O B. Because they have to confirm that the building meets the requirements for that D O H permit.
So you therefore need the C O before you can get a D O H permit?
Yeah, so it's like a chicken and an egg problem. So that was a question. And now I'll turn to Amber to answer, um, various questions about the E A S and the stairs, etc. Amber.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you. I'm Amber Cartan with J V A. I listened to the review session, and just please let me know if I'm missing anything as I go through the items as it relates to the environmental. Uh, the first comment I heard was related to the interior noise testing. And we had a slight exceedance in the interior. At the time, it wasn't fitted out. Uh, there was no partitions, so we did have that exceedance. I wanna note that we had a similar, uh, situation with the daycare, uh, seven oh four Broadway for a Bright Horizons facility, where we had the same circumstance, where the building wasn't fitted out. So we had the exceedances, and D P has indicated in the past and on that application, that when the building is not fitted out, um, it doesn't really give you a reflection of how things will operate once there's carpet and furniture and the partitions are up, which is why we indicated that we would reperform the, uh, the interior noise testing, um, once that's done, which is a little bit of a catch twenty-two, because that can't be done until we have, um, a B S A decision. Um, and on that application, we did do the interior noise testing and it similar circumstance, and it came back acceptable. We submitted the report to D P, and then they submitted a, a closure report indicating that the noise conditions uh, were met. In a, in a cir- in a, in a circumstance where, let's say they weren't met.
I have a question. When you say you cited that other case, was that also about being a railroad track, an active railroad track?
It wasn't, no, it was not. But here we have, I believe...
That's the distinction, that's the distinction between the case that you're citing and this site. I, I think even if you do the noise attenuation, especially for the classrooms that are in the, in the rear of the lot that will be facing the railroad track, you need noise attenuation. So I, I'm not that concerned about the ones in the front. I think those would screen out. It's the ones in the front, sorry, in the rear, where the, the noise attenuation and alternate means should be provided and it should not be after the TCO. Because those, those may require a different set of treatment measures and it's not just carpeting and furnishing.
Yes, understood. So just to clarify, as it stands right now, there are special windows on the rear adjacent to that rail and those are inoperable windows. And we would be doing the noise testing, once it's fitted out, after a BSA decision, but prior to the TCO. And for instance, let's say there was still slight exceedances. Now here we only have, I believe it's point five decibels above the, the limit. We would employ something like city quiet inserts on those existing windows. So there would be mitigation that could get it down if it was the case that with the partitions and the fit out, we did not meet the 45 interior. My only concern is we can't go out right now and redo the interior noise with the conditions that currently exist, because it wouldn't reflect future conditions.
The, since the windows are fixed, is there an alternate means of ventilation for those rooms?
Yes, there is, there is. And that's something that when we did this in the past, we provided all of that documentation to, to DEP with the window specifications, the noise report, once it was fitted out, as well as demonstrating that an alternate means of ventilation was provided. And that was...
And what is the rating of the window?
Russ, do you know the rating of the existing windows to the rear?
The fire rate or the sound rating?
The, the noise, the noise rating?
I can find out.
Okay.
Fire rated, why is that?
The reason I'm asking it, I don't think a 28 DBA would work. It has to be more than that, because it's by the railroad. And...
Right, and I know that it is more than that.
Usually the fire rated windows are very thick glass. So I'm sure it has a very high rating, otherwise.
So if it's fire rated anyway, it is going to be more than 28?
It's going to be very high rating class. And if anything, we can also apply some sort of film on top of the existing glazing to increase that rating.
All right, anyway, I think DEP is going to review this. I just kind of want to alert you that, that you should be prepared for that. That is, I, I think that is going to be a critical component of this, especially also with the rooftop. You would need to provide some noise attenuation for the rooftop play area.
Absolutely understood. Yeah, the, the results of the noise reading at the rooftop, I think we had a 70 point, I can look at it. A little bit above 70, 70 point something on the rooftop. And we're prepared to employ an acoustic fence along the fence of the roof as well, just as an abundance of caution. Even if DEP does not request it, we're willing to do that.
Okay, I would say then, right. There might be some more comments coming from DEP, so I, I don't know what the timeline of the reviews. You have just submitted it. So hopefully you can consolidate all of DEP comments and notes and respond to those questions and address these issues accordingly.
Absolutely.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem that the fence at the play area at the roof is an acoustic one. It says new 10 feet high wire fence, I believe.
Yeah, that's what the app, they're saying that they will proactively provide it even if DEP does not require it.
Yeah.
And, and why, why testing right now is not possible? What is going to be different between now and the future conditions? Testing wise?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
What is going to be different between now and future conditions from the...
Inside the building.
Inside the building, okay.
Yeah, yeah. The results on the, the rooftop will not change. It's the interior where the daycare would occupy that's going to be changing with partitions and carpeting and...
I thought you, like, you measure the ambient outside and then you determine the STC for the proposed windows based on that.
That, that's correct. That's typically, that's typically what we do. But just to gauge where we're at currently, we also did the interior. So DEP typically will accept if we just do the outside, specify what's needed and then monitor after a BSA decision and interior and specify that we've met those requirements. That's what we've done in the past on circumstances like this.
Okay, thank you.
But not every fire, yeah, not every fire rated window. Yeah, just to be clear, not every fire rated window is acoustical thing, but generally tends to be better than 28. Or 25.
These are, it's, it's my understanding these are acoustical and if we can provide the specific window specifications, we will need to anyways for DEP, so we will get that information.
Okay.
There was another question related to the signage in front of the proposed daycare space as well as the adjacent ambulate signage that's to the, to the right if you're facing the building. We did go out and we did a curb side utilization and curb cut utilization study to assess the neighboring businesses, to see how long and how many vehicles by class were staged in those areas. We're actually redoing that study at the request of the community board, since some time has lapsed since we originally did it in 2021. At its peak, you have the adjacent ambulate parking area that serves the Davida renal care facility. And at its peak, there was two, two vans or ambulates at most staged there. They're very quick drop offs for patients. So there's no overflow for many of the adjacent uses that come onto the frontage of the project site.
Okay. And the current no parking sign that is in front of the synagogue, that will be replaced with the school?
The...
I'm trying to figure out where the no standing for the school will be placed. It will be just in front of the subject site?
Just...
Or it will include the...
Just in front of this.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, just in front of the, there's 60 feet of frontage there, so it would be just in front of the, the project site.
And Amber, I don't know if I'm overstepping here, but aren't their operation hours slightly different too, which helps us?
For the, for the funeral home?
Yeah.
Yes, they are, they are.
Oh, that's a funeral home to the left?
To the left, if you're facing the building, that's correct. There was nothing noted besides one car in front of the funeral home during our observations, during our peak hours.
Okay, so I think that also should be picked up in your discussion, in your, in your findings statement.
In the findings, okay, we can update that once we have the new, we're, we're doing the study, so we'll update that with the most recent, once we have that.
And then that just reminds me about the community board, just so you know, we met with the, Amber and Kevin and I met again with the land use committee once we submitted our notice of comments, so they had a more updated set of documents. We did that like last week and they're voting tomorrow, the community board. So you will have a community board vote.
Okay.
So, just let me...
Good, thank you.
And part of the, part of the discussion that I just wanted you to be aware of is the findings she just suggested. You know how when you go to the BSA for a 7319, you have to first meet with DOT? So the time lapsed between that time and today, because you know, you have to go through the whole process. So that was a little bit frustrating for the community board, because you know, a lot has happened on that block from the time we went into DOT to, to now.
I see, okay, got it.
Which we're now incorporating and, or we've been incorporating as the document's been changing.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want community boards to wait for the final set of information to vote it out, because that's not how BSA hearings are structured, unlike other agency hearing structures.
And we really appreciate that and we tried to explain that to the community board, because they're used to seeing rezonings, which is a very different process. But I just wanted to give you an update about our conversations with the community.
No, I'm glad you were able to provide the information, the community board was looking and community board has agreed to hold a hearing. That's great, good. What was the other question we had? There was a question.
Roof access, I guess.
Finding, with regards to the meeting the definition of school, I, what I read out initially is what the board had found for daycares that were just starting for the first time and they did not have any prior experience or, or didn't have the license with another daycare. So those were the conditions typically we would look for. So, so far, in your statement, you, you, you will be applying for Article 47, but there's also the issue of complying with Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and, and the other prong, I wouldn't call it a prong, really. It's clarifying how you would be, you know, maintain minimum staff, child ratio, adhering to maximum group size, all of those. Because those are also, to some extent, meet the definition of standard schools that operates in the city.
And I think those are currently reflected on the plans and I can ask the project manager for a sample and just put them into the state. I'm saying there's a, it's broken down on the...
Right, it should be in the statement. Yeah, that's your threshold, that this is a school that is going to meet all of these DOH, health and mental, and any way, any, the other ways that we kind of have been evaluating daycare facilities. So I, I basically looked at a couple of samples of daycare facilities that the board recently approved, which were the first timers. And I picked up that language. So if you want, we can send you a sample of those resolutions and you can kind of use that to figure out how to prepare your documents.
Okay, no problem. So, oh...
Amber, should we turn back to talking about the roof access? And then I'll, after you're done, we can go into the search criteria and the questions about the plans I can share and we can clarify some of the confusion. So.
I think for the roof access, we had said that we were going to discuss that internally and discuss it with the operator and present to the board in writing, you know, a, a plan that ensures that there would be clear separation and specify whether it's the elevator or the stairwell and which stairwell would be used, right, Elise?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, you...
And there is, as you noticed, there is a separate entrance already and we can do key cards or different things, but we'll discuss that with...
Right, yeah, it wasn't clear from the plan which staircase you were referring to. And since both of these are fire exits, and so you need to just give more backup or operational plan in some ways as to how you will be able to maintain separation of the different tenants from the children.
Absolutely.
Okay?
So I spoke with the operator, and she's a first time operator, and she was at work when I spoke to her. And so apologies if she can't be here right now. But we talked about the search criteria. So one is, she told me that in order to run an infant less than two years, you need to be on the ground floor. So that was a requirement that I think we should focus, add to, you know, her letter. She needs to be on the ground floor, it was imperative. If you, and that's because in an emergency, you have to be able to get those infants out of the building. So, and another thing she did tell me is the place she works at now is two plus. And she understands that community, not only does she, you know, have, know the clientele, but she speaks multiple languages, can have immigrants, and she really serves that community and the needs of that community. So she wanted to open a place that's, that serves the less than two years of age and, and really focus more on the infants rather than the older children. So this location was chosen because she understands that community and she's been working in it so much. And we used a catchment area to look at a place that was in a commercial district that parents would be able to drop their kids off while they were close to home or going to work. So it's in a great location that's within about a mile of that other location, so that she can serve that same population.
I see. So they will graduate to the other facility? It's indirectly, that's kind of what you're saying?
They can, yeah, but this is a totally separate facility. She just really understands that community, it's not connected to that. She just, she's ready now that she's been working there.
It's more the catchment area, it's more the catchment area. I think, let's just then keep the focus on the catchment area rather than the school. Because that threw me off, because there, there is no connection in terms of operationally on that. I understand, it's a more of a business decision, but really primarily it's the catchment area that you're trying to pick up.
So I think we're going to take off Neptune and we can take off that, that area, like the school she already works in and just say she was looking for a commercial district that, that, where all these community boards meet, so she can serve the...
No, she was looking for a...
Students that are the...
Hold on, she was looking for a zoning district where the use is permitted as of right. She couldn't find it, that's why she picked the C8s district.
As of right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying Manhattan Beach is mostly all residential, so she couldn't really like, for instance, go deeper into Manhattan Beach.
Okay, okay, all right.
As a sample.
Just clarify the language and go through the rationale a little bit more clearly.
Okay, no problem. And then maybe now is a good time to share the plan, so we can talk about the notes on them that I think that they would help clarify if we point to certain things and you can say how you'd like to see it for clarification, because I know there was some confusion about what floor is what, if that's okay?
So, okay. Are you going to share the plan? Go ahead, share the plan.
Yeah.
Share. While you pull that up, one more thing that was related to environmental that I forgot to respond to. The model splits for students, for, for children and caregivers was based on Journey to Work census data for that community. I think it's the Census tract and all bounding, understanding that caregivers are generally going to send their children to an area where they either live or work and along their, along their route, since there was not an existing daycare to survey. That's typically what we would use for a daycare.
Yeah, I don't know, Elise, can you remove yourself from the screen with your plan? I guess not.
I don't know how you do this. I'm not used to teams.
Oh, gosh.
I don't know what to do.
Maybe you can turn your camera off while you're presenting?
How do I do that?
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
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 Can you see what I'm showing now?
Yes, yes.
Or maybe I can make it...
Maybe you can zoom in a little bit more.
Yeah, this is a learning process for me as well, because I'm so used to Zoom.
For us too.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so Russ, now to you. Is there, there was a note that I think was really helpful, or if there's a page you think I should go to first to just talk about what you showed and why you showed it?
You could go to the height diagram. That's going to be...
Yeah, yes, right there, right there.
Or the one before is actually better to look at.
There is number four.
The one after.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
So you see that the lowest level is the, the ground floor and the actual second floor is labeled the, the first floor and so on. So back then, at the time of filing of that building with DOP, the zoning regulations were a little bit different than they are today. So back then, there was a seller for zoning purposes, as well if the space in question mostly below the design flat elevation, DFE. So that's why back then, the seller, our ground floor, was a seller for zoning purposes, was excluded for, from zoning floor calculations. Now, when we filed the building now with DOP, they updated the language in the zoning text. So that's not the case anymore. They removed that provision for the seller being, the, the ground floor being a seller for zoning purposes. That's not the case anymore. But if you go to the page, the third page, it says 03.
Is that it?
On the footnote, I put the explanation, what's happening, right? So I cannot call that floor a first floor anymore. I would have called that first floor, ground floor, first floor, if this was again a new building. But the building has a CBO already. building, but the building has a CO already, so I got to follow whatever is on the CO. So on the CO, the grade level floor is a ground floor. And I'm excluding it from the zoning square footage. On the first floor, because all the signs in the building are in place, all the elevator signage equipment, everything is there labeled as a ground floor and a first floor, otherwise I would have called the first floor.
Well, from a zoning point of view, definitely cannot call the ground floor the first floor in this case because first, in a flood zone, first floor has to be above the base flood elevation, design flood elevation. So therefore it cannot.
No, the lowest level is always a first floor unless it's a space less than a seven feet headroom and it's an accessory to a one to family, in that case you call it a ground floor as per today's regulations. Today, if that ground floor is more than seven feet headroom and it's a ground floor that's used for anything, then it's a first floor for building and for zoning. And there is a different set of deductions.
Not in a flood zone, I'm sorry, I understand what you're saying, but not in a flood zone. In a flood zone, in a flood zone, any floor that is, in a flood zone, an zoning floor area has to be above the design flood elevation. So anything below therefore is not considered a first floor. Anything below therefore is either a basement or a cellar and the definition of basement and cellar is driven by 1210 definition. If it is more than 50% above ground level, or in this case it will be more than 50% above the flood zone, then it's a basement. Anything less than 50%, then it would be cellar. In this case, more than 50% of the vertical height is above the flood zone and therefore it's a basement and not a cellar.
Below, it is below, that's the whole thing, it is below. That's why it's a cellar for zoning purposes and that's why it's not a zoning floor area. You can check it from the diagram on the next page.
Okay.
Are you saying it's a cellar and not subject to floor area?
That's what you're saying? No, actually, anything that is in the flood zone, the space that is partially in the flood zone and is going to be reused, flood regulation 6400 if you go to, is not counted in the floor area. So that is okay. So you may want to look through the zoning resolution section and cite the relevant section applicable for sites that are located in the flood zone.
It's on the previous page.
He says it's on the previous page.
Yeah, see, I put the definition, that's how it was before. They removed that definition recently, they updated the zoning text.
Okay, I'll make it.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, just go through that. Commissioner Vice Cheshaveta showing me the flood resilience zoning overview diagram and in that, it does say the floor such as basement or cellars and ground floor use is limited to parking. So it is, so you know, all three are permitted to be on the ground floor below flood level, that's really what we are getting at, but just be consistent.
No, I'm saying all labels throughout the entire set are labeled ground floor, grade level floor, and then it's a first, second, that's how it's labeled throughout the entire set.
Your first floor plan is the ground floor plan though, and your title block states the daycare on the first floor, but it's actually on the ground floor. So that's where the confusion lies. It's not consistent.
I'm looking at the, is that the BSA zero zero eight? That's the page number, no, the previous one? No, that's not it, that's the one. So it says proposed, it's a ground floor, proposed ground floor plan.
Yeah, I think, I guess she's saying here, right?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess if we update that, that'll less confuse everyone?
Yeah, maybe that would.
The project name, yeah.
I didn't know what you meant, yeah.
Okay. Now we're all on the same page, I guess?
I think so.
Okay, cool.
Also, flood emergency action plan was mentioned not long ago and we actually do have it on the BSA filing set. I could include it into the BSA set as well. If that's required for the BSA.
You wanted the emergency action plan?
Yeah.
Right, but it was flood regulated emergency action plan, that's in the plans?
He's saying he can add it.
We can.
Yeah.
It, I, it really is a narrative that should be in the statement of findings because we need to make sure.
Doesn't the building have an evacuation plan just as a matter of environment?
We did ask for a separate action plan on a similar application.
Pioneer?
Yes.
And how did we handle that?
And they submitted a separate plan indicating the actions in case of flood.
Got it.
So I would say submit it separately.
Okay.
On this application.
Okay.
I did read some language in the statement of facts talking about where the kid is going to be like taken out to the top floor and that, but it, a separate plan would be, would be like.
You're right, thank you Commissioner Sheta for reminding us. We did recently approve a case called, located on Pioneer Street and there, they did provide a separate plan of, that showed how the flood emergency action would be carried through. If you want, we can send you a sample so that you can pictorially show that and it can, it also should be carried forth as a narrative in the statement.
And if you want to mention something about it in the statement, that's fine. There is a section in the statement that says flood compliance, I will change that to flood emergency action plan and put some like very brief summary of that and then refer the reader to the detailed separate plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I, I think that's a good, good solution.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
So we'll submit it, yeah, we'll submit it as a separate plan, Russ will send it to me and then I'll put a narrative in the statement of facts with it. Okay, and then Russ, is there any, do you want to?
Yeah, I was going to say that the current CO and the proposed CO are mentioning that this building is going to be unoccupied during the flood event. It's not meant to be occupied during the flood event. So when the exit doors, the main everyday exit doors are blocked by the flood shields, those exterior stairs that provide exit at the level higher than the design flood elevations are really for the personnel to get into the building, not for the people to get out. They could get out, but the building is supposed to be unoccupied during the flood event. It's right now on the current CO. By the way, the current CO is available on the DOB Now website.
They also have a copy submitted.
And it's going to remain, it's going to remain.
If you're going to be sure about this assumptions and I doubt anyone can be sure 100% that it's not going to be occupied during flood because no one is like really 100% capable of predicting when and how a flood is going to hit, I would say your action plan should be just one sentence, the building will not be occupied during flood. Since this is not certain and we're not sure about it, I believe the assumption should be the opposite and that's how you should like lay out your action plan, emergency action plan.
No, we do have, this is just an extra precaution because right now we do have two exits from the building that are higher than the design flood elevations for the occupants, just in case, as required by the code. In addition to that, we have a statement on the CO that the building not to be occupied during the flood event.
It would be great if you could submit it. I realize that DOB biz is not showing PDFs and I'm having a hard time finding it, the building CO on DOB Now, but I do see now that there is a note that says the final CO was issued on September 28, 2023. So if you could just submit it so we have it for the record because I think there's a, biz is not showing COs right now.
I think, I'll check again, but I think we submitted it with the original application.
Okay, all right, let me look real quick, sorry.
I don't, I don't, if I didn't, then that's my mistake, but usually I do.
It's on DOB Now.
I think it's my mistake, I think I found it. Yeah, 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 I found it. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
My mistake.
No problem. I'm like, that's on my checklist when I first submitted an application. And I panic when we don't have a certificate of occupants.
And I was going to mention, Commissioner Sheta mentioned that there were helical piles, Commissioner, we did not have helical piles on this job, that was removed. So it's removed from the plans and from the required items list on DOB. So we do not have helical piles, we just have regular magnum piles.
Do you have piles at all?
What's that?
Do you have piles at all?
We have piles, yes, but they don't.
But different type you mean?
Yeah, different type.
Okay.
I was going to mention, we don't have a regular slab on grid, which would be like a four, five inch slab on grid. We do have a 12 inch mat foundation that is tied to the pile cap. If not for the flood zone, that slab would have been four, five inches, but because of flood zone, that mat foundation, which is a heavily reinforced 12 inches big slab and tied to pile caps, it provides like resistance to hydro, static and hydrodynamic loads and affects buoyancy. That's the entire purpose of that mat foundation.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your feedback. So you're saying that you checked this slab structurally against uplift forces?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just pulled up the CO that we have on file and, and just showing the comments that, that were discussed as far as requirements regarding the flood proofing and the evacuation during a flood event.
Okay. That's, okay, yes, I do remember, that is where, that is where I saw it. I was trying to figure out.
My bad, I missed that.
Okay.
There's a lot of different things going on, I totally understand. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's all the comments and we need comments back from, as you know, the sister agencies, so.
Yeah. Again, any other questions or comments, additional? Nope?
So.
Did they, they didn't quite address the, you know, sending the children up the stairs?
No, they will look into it.
They said they're going to work out a plan, right?
Yes, they're going to look into it, discuss with the operator and, and the property owner to figure out. I don't think this can be done here at this hearing. So they would look into it. Okay. Any, if not any questions, I want to go to the, I would like to go to the public?
Jella has her hand raised.
Hmm?
Jella has her hand raised, I think?
Yes, Jella? Sorry, Jella, it's into you, I didn't see it.
Hi, so will that be sufficient, the information that is on the CO et cetera, on the plans? Or do you still want an emergency action plan provided as a separate document?
So, so this is the emergency action plan for the entire building. I just want to make sure that the operator knows how, knows to incorporate that into their operational plan and, and how they will respond to it, like they, how they will prepare the children and take the children out, that's what I'm also now looking for. Typically, you know, like.
Okay, great.
I'll give you an example, if you're, if you're looking for school, children drop off, pickup, we have this operational plan, how quickly they'll be able to take them in and out and other things. So in this case, they should just provide something that says how they will be responding as in, when that situation arises. And, you know, if the notification is sent beforehand, they will notify the children or, and if it happens a few hours into it, I don't know, no, I'm making it up, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go to the public? Yeah.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is 2024-02bz, 56 Brighton, 11th Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, dial 646-890-7101. You will enter the phone conference ID number 15318462 and press the pound sign. You'll, there will be a brief hold and you will wait to be admitted. Once you are admitted, you will press star five to raise your hand, star six to unmute since you're calling in on the phone. And if you are in the web, by the web, you can go through our website with the Board of Standards and Appeals and put the meeting ID number, which is 258, 258-570-541-752. And the passcode will be uppercase F, lowercase E, uppercase J, uppercase W, the number three, and the uppercase H. Once you are admitted, you will have three minutes to, in which to discuss.
Okay. All right. How much time did I need? How much time, yeah, how much time will you need to, I think there's a good part review that we also need from other agencies, so we need to coordinate that.
I think it's good, we can do whatever the agencies can do because, you know, she really does want to open up this daycare as soon as she can, so whatever works with the agency review is what we'll take.
Okay, all right. So just work closely with our project manager and we will try to schedule accordingly. I again want to thank your team for giving us so much time and responding to all the questions and comments.
Well, thank you for waiting because I think these professionals know a lot more than I do about some various items.
Okay, we're just waiting for the clock to run out, no, see if anyone calls in.
Thank you, Amber and Russ.
Yeah, it's good to see you, Amber.
Good to be back. I have a training.
Yes, I don't think you need to hear the, you need to be here for the bell to ring. You can leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you so much.
Bye, thank you, everyone.
Don't leave yet, Elise.
I'm not leaving.
Okay. No one called, no hands were raised. So thank you again and we'll see you when the time is right.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience, too.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now recalling decision items from May 20th. The first one is item number 10, 2020-51bz, 2020-52A, 2020-53bz, and 2020-54A. This is 95 and 105 Ridgeway Avenue, Staten Island.
Okay, so we have a complete, SECRIS complete. And just to refresh, this is a GCL 36 waiver and a variance for accessing the as of right, accessing an as of right self-service storage facility, which is proposed to be built on a zoning lot located in an M11 zoning district through a residential zoning district, which is contrary to zoning resolution section 22-10. A revised plan has been submitted. The revised plan is compliant with the zoning regulations. Additional planting along the sidewalk, abutting the site will also be provided. In addition, planting on the roof along the Ridgeway Avenue will also be provided. So what I'm going to read out are going to be in two sets. First, I'm going to read out all, how the plan has been revised to respond to all the SECRIS conditions and these are, the proposed facility will provide a self-service storage facility, use group 16D, and the maximum size of individual storage units will not exceed 300 square feet as required in the zoning resolution. The interior traffic flow will be one-way, insert an arrow showing clearly that it is a one-way traffic, that should be on the plan. Vehicular entry will be, will only be permitted along the eastern ingress, ingress of the property near building A and exit will only be permitted at the western egress of the property near building B. Only right turn exit shall be permitted from the exit. Provide signage of entry only and exit only at relevant access points. A total of seven vehicle parking spaces will be provided onsite and the four required loading berths for light trucks and vans. A 10-foot-high clatter bar with 14-foot-high structural clearance will be placed at the entrance to prohibit any large trucks from accesses, accessing the site. And please note that this solution was acceptable to fire department. Post-signage on the interior of the site that states idling of vehicle is not permitted on the subject property. The HVAC system for building A shall be located. The HVAC system for building A shall be located at a height of 37.4 feet above grade. And HVAC system for building B shall be located at a height of 37.4 feet above grade. And the stack shall be located at least 40 feet from the western lot line of block 2610 Lot 50 and at least 40 feet from the southern lot line of block 2610 Lot 70. So now I'm going to, with that said, I'm going to make a motion to approve with the following conditions. And these conditions shall be included in the certificate of occupancy. And the conditions are, only a self-service service storage facility used shall be permitted on the zoning lot and shall meet the underlying zoning requirements of the proposed use. Zoning floor area shall not exceed 83,335 square feet as shown on the BSA approved plan. And maximum storage unit shall not exceed 300 square feet, each unit size, that is. Hours of operation shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. One-way traffic flow shall be provided in the interior as shown on the BSA approved plan. A clatter bar with a clearance height of 10 feet and a structural clearance of 14 feet shall be installed at the eastern entrance of the property. The improvements to the sidewalk as required and curb cuts shall meet DOT standards. And planting on the site shall be maintained at all times. Additional conditions that should be included in the CO with regards to air quality. HVAC types shall comply with all applicable laws and regulations as determined by DOB and other relevant agencies. Additional comments, conditions that should be on CO regarding DEC is the BSA is not waiving any applicable New York State DEC rules and regulations applicable to the subject property, including but not limited to Title VI, Chapter 10 of New York Code's rules and regulations. Any deviation from the applicable DEC rules or regulations shall be subject to review and approval by DEC. All conditions are determined by New York State DEC for Article 24 freshwater wetland permit application ID number 2-6403-00280/00003 shall be met. And all these conditions shall be implemented prior to obtaining a temporary certificate of occupancy. So with that motion to approve.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Application has been granted.
And I want to thank Ms. Jella Prenga and Ms. Tracy Benke for working tirelessly behind the scene with all the relevant agencies and with the applicant to get this to the finish line. I also want to thank the applicant for being responsive to all the comments. Thank you.
Next decision item is 2023-48bz 7509 Shore Road, Brooklyn.
Okay. So SECRIS is closed and plans have been revised to include conditions related to SECRIS. And again, just a reminder, this is a waiver only for bulk and yard and no changes proposed to the use or density. So following are the SECRIS-related conditions. The proposed curb cut on Shore Road shall be compliant with zoning regulations. A seven-foot spacing between street trees and outside edge of any curb shall be provided. The sidewalk along Shore Road shall have a minimum width of 17'6". All existing plant encroachments on the sidewalk must be removed and reconstructed to standard New York City concrete sidewalk, built in accordance to New York City DOT standard and fully accessible and shall be fully accessible to public. The existing curb cut on Shore Road shall be removed and rebuilt as a full-height curb. Final dimensions and locations of curb cuts shall be reviewed and approved by DOT. Pedestrian ramps shall be upgraded at all four corners of Shore Road and Bay Ridge Parkway to the latest ADA standard that is acceptable to New York City DOT. Upon completion of the construction, a no-standing school zone from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM signage shall be installed along curbs adjacent to the new school frontages with final locations to be determined by city DOT. The applicant shall notify city DOT six months prior to opening of the school so that DOT can install all the necessary signs. And so with that, I want to make a motion to approve with conditions. And these conditions shall be included in the certificate of occupancy. And the conditions are, the access to the roof of the building on Lot 16 shall be limited to only classes and for annual parent function. The maximum capacity shall be limited to 120 for parent function and class seating 56. In addition, a sound-absorbing barrier of minimum four foot high above the roof terrace along the eastern parapet shall be installed and planter boxes of minimum four foot high shall be located six feet from the eastern parapet wall. There shall be no sound amplification on the roof of either buildings, of either building. And these measures shall be in place prior to obtaining a TCO. Applicant is also required to submit a builder's payment plan on and all required drawings as per DOT specifications and requirements for DOT review and approval. And all the improvements are for, that are shown on the plans are for illustrative purposes and will require DOT review and approval post BSA approval. And again, I want to thank our amazing team of Ms. Prenga and Ms. Benke for getting this through the finishing line and everybody involved in this. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Application is granted. Okay, this concludes, that's done. There's no other business. This concludes the public hearing for May 21, 2024. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you.